Because he's a super player
I know
Because he's a brilliant player
That's right
All the opposition setting defense
Double defense Hey, triple defense
Hey! But... Ee ee The game is on And everybody's supposed to play But everybody against woman And that woman is always Ha! A moment where Yeah! Because he's a super player
I know
Because he's a brilliant player
That's right
All the opposition setting defense
Double defense Hey, triple defense
Hey! But a man who can't is not in terms of his defense He's warming up Babey is warming up Check it Yeah, he's jogging, jogging, jogging And the crowd is cheering Wow, look what I have One thing I want to tell you, babey The chakra defense Babey chakra defense Oh yeah! You get him got a bit You get him got a bit You get him got a bit Waka chakra defense You get him got a bit You get him got a bit You get him got a bit Waka chakra defense Hey la Na 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 Hey la Rap etech Ha ha! The papa is a professional player The papa is a very, very good driver No matter what kind of defense you build Now, I'm a wiggy devil I'm a wiggy you calabogu Hey! I'm a wiggy you kiki kaka What I watch Hey! With a cap too Hey hey hey! We got it with a cap too Get it! You know why you compare away You compare away I walk you compare away You get him got a bit You get him got a bit You get him got a bit Waka chakra defense You get him got a bit You get him got a bit You get him got a bit Waka chakra defense Hey la Na 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 Rap etech Ha ha! The game is on And everybody's watching again
Okay, 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 okay So folks, wherever you joining us tonight again, we on it again Again, I'm Elijah S Moses tonight And we'll be joining the team right in Minnesota, okay? And in Minnesota, where the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai will be taking the town hall engagement today And it will not be that easy And the halls as we speak now The halls is getting jam packed, jam packed as we speak now Let us give you the view of the house in Minnesota right here And so folks, wherever you joining us, want to say continue to share And continue to like And again, this is today Liberia Television And I'm Elijah S Moses I want to say wherever you joining us folks, want to say thank you for joining us Again, this is USA Today Liberia live in the USA And bringing to you live Town Hall Engagement With the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai And it will be a very, very great program tonight You would like to miss this program tonight Wherever you joining us, don't recharge your dajits And just dress close to your monitor As we bring you the best Nothing but the best I'm here tonight With you On day 3 o'clock Liberian time tonight this morning So wherever you joining us I want to say thank you for joining us Stay tuned, don't go away As we bring you all of the happening The halls is getting jam packed now In Minnesota Where cause of Liberians From all wealth of life will be coming together To Interact with the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai He will be telling you his ambitions What he will be doing for the people of Liberia When he is elected as the President of Republic of Liberia So stay tuned, don't go away The best is years to come
Please be Joseph Bokai And everybody's supposed to play But everybody against woman And that woman is always
And this is currently what is happening in the hall Right in Minnesota As you can see, the oceans are ushering the guests in now Let us see the look, okay? Let us see the look Let us see the look And this is Moses Elijah I'm standing there pretty well And making sure that we bring you all of the happening All of the happening Let's take the look of the hall
And the crowd is cheering Wow, look what I have One thing I want to tell you, babey I think, I think Chakra defense Babey chakra The game is on And everybody's supposed to play But everybody against woman And that woman is always A moment where Yeah! Because he's a super player
This is currently what is happening right in the United States Ahhh The former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai is making history in the United States And now he's engaging with cause of citizens in Liberia And those from Liberia And those from all part of the war Now in Minnesota, okay? All of them are coming in now Trying to usher them in To wait for the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai To give them the outlook what he will be doing for the people of Liberia And so stay tuned, don't go away And this is today Liberia We bring you all of the happening This is what is happening live in Minnesota, okay? Take note Don't shake it, okay? Best is years to come Our team has settled I pray they are prepared And everything is set inside there And the sound, don't worry about the sound The sound system will be very, very great What was happening yesterday was just a prelude But now we are ready And we are ready for truth And this is what we can do Today Liberia First in news And best in entertainment We are here Of course, bringing you all of the happening Moses Elijah is my name We waiting for your call And tonight What do you intend? What do you want the people of Minnesota To ask the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai? What are some of the questions You expect for the people to be asking? And the guests folks are celebrating They have their labyrinth flag waving And my goodness
We got it with a cap too Get it! You know why you compare away You compare away I walk you compare away The game is on And everybody's supposed to play But everybody against woman And that woman is always
And indeed, those of you that watching us folks from the United Party We are tired answering your calls Please, get ready, please go on the page and start answering the calls, okay? Start to answer the people call We are tired answering your call for location, okay? People are just calling us all over life, they want to come They want to know the location So the organizer for the program If you are listening to us, please Please, 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 please Someone, people are just asking us for the location Please try to engage the people Please try to pick your call, they are calling you, you don't want to answer your call The organizer, okay? Please answer your call, okay? I'm not here to be answering your call, I'm not your P R O, okay? Please answer your call Alright
The game is on And everybody's supposed to play But everybody against woman And that woman is always A moment where Yeah! Because he's a super player
I know
Because he's a brilliant player
That's right
All the opposition setting defense Double defense Hey, triple defense Hey! But a man who can't is not in terms of his defense He's warming up Babey is warming up Check it Yeah, he's jogging, jogging, jogging And the crowd is cheering Wow, look what I have One thing I want to tell you, babey The chakra defense Babey chakra defense
And indeed, the proper chakra they defend And the house is jam packed as you speak now As you speak now, the house is jam packed We have cause of Liberian citizens All wealth of life, they gather themselves in Minnesota To listen to the voice of the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai What he have to offer for the people of Liberia Hello? Yeah?
Double defense Hey, triple defense Hey! But a man who can't is not in terms of his defense He's warming up Babey is warming up Check it Yeah, he's jogging, jogging, jogging And the crowd is cheering Wow, look what I have One thing I want to tell you, babey The chakra defense
Whether the proper chakra they defend, any not chakra they defend All we know, you should please answer your call You should please answer the call And people are asking us all over For the location And please, you should not give us headache We have lot of work to do tonight You should not give us headache If you not, if, if you can't do anything to us You should leave us alone, okay? You should be answering your call, okay?
The papa is a professional player The papa is a very, very good driver No matter what kind of defense you build Now, I'm a wiggy devil
And this is not the pre-recording event that you all talk about And this is live event, live event, live in Minnesota, okay? And again, I'm Elijah S Moses, I'm live in Liberia And our main studio making sure that we bring you all of the happening So all of the United Parties Those of you that in Liberia Those of you that outside Liberia Those of you that in Canada And all over life tonight You can dress close to your monitor And hear what the former Vice President Joseph N'uma Bokai is about to tear the world tonight It will not be that easy live in Minnesota, okay? And indeed And people are asking where I'm there, I'm not there, doggo I'm not there I'm not in Minnesota I'm right sitting down in Liberia And making sure that bring you all of the happening And the case This is why technology can do And we do this For all of you And we are not the politicians And we are not intend to be politicians And we not be politicians But all we want to do Is to promote Liberia Liberia first And Liberia second All we need to do Is let us work together Peace is all we need And this is the people of United Party We must celebrate them tonight And everything is going to them And this broadcast is dedicated to all of them And not forgetting the cheer lady Madame Binto Hunter And not forgetting Ah, Madame Finna Cool, okay? All of them, they are there And not forgetting the chairman They are in the house Oh my goodness Don't give me, nobody give me program shit, no Okay They catch on keep like that
Shout out in the air! Come on, one, two, let's go! The papas is coming, everybody shake it! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Oh, I see him coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Everybody is shouting, scream! Everybody is shaking! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Oh, I see him coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Oh, I see him coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Everybody is shouting, scream! Everybody is shaking! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Hey! Let me see you shake it, eh, shake it, eh, shake it, eh, shake it! Ha ha ha! Hey! Yeah, we moving for paga man! Yeah, we moving for paga man! Everybody up there, we moving for paga man! Yeah! About me, we love you pa, oh yeah! About me, we love you pa, oh yeah! Everybody loves you pa, oh yeah! Hey, you say you can rock it? Hey, you say you can shake it? Hey, you say you can rock it? I'm gonna give you something beautiful, you can rock it! Rock it up, rock it up, rock it up! Shake it up, rock it up! Rock it, rock it, rock it, rock it, rock it, rock it! The papas is coming, everybody shake it! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Oh, I see him coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Everybody is shouting, scream! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Oh, I see him coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Everybody is shouting, scream! Everybody is shaking! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! Victory is striking and when things are going here! They are all my people! Getting to celebrate, they will celebrate, I was victory! Everybody! And it's only by ignorance! Or challenge and just an elephant do a battle! The papas is coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! You see, I didn't want you, all my people! Niggas never get on up, papas way! Or I can't wait carry you! So let me wait carry you! No matter what be wow! Give way! Give way! Give way! Give way! Everybody! Shake a boom boom! Hey! Shake a boom! Shake a boom! Ha ha ha! It's hard! Ladies and gentlemen, yes! When we shout! Simple titles and collaborate cause of the United Party! Here we are! Time to put! And on a smash everywhere in this country! Come on! And move along with Zulu and Manta! I tell you! Right, shake it like this, let me give you the power! Left, 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 right, left, right, left, right, left, right, left, right! Hey! The process has begun! We're going for a sign! Victory was something... Opposition was... Right, shout! Escape! Ay ya ya! I get it! I get it! I get it! Oh, oh! Trap, come on! All the way! Hey! Hey! It's hot! Everybody! Ah, ah! Everybody! Hey! Let me see the way! Forget it! Get up, man, he's in the house! I get it! I get it! I get it! Ah! Swat! Swat! The party! Celebrate your victory! I suck a bump! Yeah! Boy! The dance, we do! Ah! Everybody is shouting, scream! Everybody is shaking! Say hello! Say hello! Hey! Hey! Let me see you shake it! Eh, shake it, eh, shake it, eh, shake it! Ah! Ha ha ha! Hey! For paga man! Yeah, we for paga! Everybody up there, we moving for paga man! About me, we love you pa! Oh, we love! Yeah! Everybody love! Oh yeah! Hey, you say? Hey, you say? Okay! I'll give you... Yeah! Rock it! Shake it! Rock it, rock it! Everybody shake! Oh! We like! Oh, oh! Your wife! I see him coming! Papas is coming! I see him coming! Your wife! Ah! In this game! Victory! Didn't win! Yeah! People! They celebrate! Ah! Only by ignorance! Challenge and just an elephant do a battle! The papas is coming! The papas is coming like a honey, I see him coming! You see, I didn't want you, all my people! Niggas never get on up, papas way! Or I can't wait carry you! So let me wait carry you! No matter what be wow! Give way! Give way! Give way! Give way! I suck a bump! Ha ha ha! Ladies and gentlemen! We shout! And collaborate! On the other... The party! Jack it! Smash everywhere! Come on! I was Zulu! Tell you! Let me give you the... Left, 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 right, right, left, right! Ha ha ha! The process has begun! We're going! Bunch of... Victory was something that be how? Yeah! Opposition was contacting the right, right, right! Escape, 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 escape! Ay ya ya! I get it! 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 Oh, oh! Trap, come on! You let the party all the way! Oh yeah! Ay ya ya! Let me see the hand! Come on! Shake a bump! Shake a bump! Shake a bump! A jaga! Yeah! Everybody! Woo! Everybody, listen to the way! Ah! Yeah! Forget it! Ah, the middle man is in the house! I get it! I get it! Hey! I get it! I get it! I get it! I get it! Hey! I get it! Shake a bump! Swat! Shake a bump! I swat! Shake a bump! You let the party! Celebrate your victory! I suck a bump! I suck a bump! Hey, hey, hey! Yeah boy! This team is not a toy! Every time, yes, and then we going! I get shot it off! Green operation! In your mouth! Oh! 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 Ask them, ask them! Oh! I'm not unbeaten! Get it, wash! They want you to get it, wash!
AK unbeaten!
Get it, wash! They want you to get it, wash! Get it! Hey! Get it, wash! Hey! Get it, wash! Here we go! Alright! Badu, where you at? Where your hands? Lot of people see you! Yes! Where your hands? Lot of people see you! Yes! Badu, where you at? Yeah! Smile! Aja! Lot of people cheer! Hey! Opposition, jack it! I said, eh, jack it! I said, eh, jack it! Ha ha! Alright! Get it, wash! Get it, wash! Get it, wash! Chaka! Chaka, cha, 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 cha! Ah! Rocky! Shake it! Shake it! Shake it! Shake it! Shake it! Look what are you lucky or not? Opposition, whether you lucky or not? Joseph Maganu got ready to take control! So whether you lucky or not? Opposition, whether you lucky or not? Joseph Maganu got ready to take control! So don't go there! Don't even go there! Don't go there! Don't go there! I said, don't go there! Don't go there! Don't even go there! Hey! Get it, wash! Get it! Get it, wash! 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 Hey! Debo, goa! On that, debo, goa! Cha, cha, debo, goa! Yeah! On that, debo, goa! Cha, cha, cha! Hey! Here we go! Get it, wash! Goa, goa, goa! Get it, wash! Hey! Wash! Want you to get it, wash! Yeah! Ma, ma! Ma! Whether you lucky or not? Ready to take? Are you lucky or not? Oh yes, we... And we don't... It's done! Join when you create, we dancing, dancing! Join me, we dancing, yeah! We dancing! Everybody's dancing, yeah! Join when you create, we dancing, dancing! Let down, yeah, we dancing! Join me, let down, yeah, we dancing! Join me, let down, yeah, we dancing! Rock, you're beyond, hey! Rock, you're beyond, oh! Shake, you're beyond, hey! Rock, you're beyond, oh! Hey, hey, hey! Oh! Hey! 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 What my second? Asha long! What I'm looking? Hey! Left, right, left, right, left, right, left, right, left, right, left, right, left, right! Hey! In your mouth! Here we go! Ha ha! Both of you, shake it! Shake it, one more! Shake it! Get high, yeah! Wash! Ah, hey! Yeah! 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 Sit down, wait! He's flying! He's flying! Yeah! 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 Cool! I got it, get it! Yeah! Get it, get it! Shake it! Get it, get it! Shake it, get it! Shake it! Shake it! Shake it! Whether you lucky? To take control! So whether you lucky or not? Are you lucky or not? Ah! You must get to the show! Oh yes, we dancing, yeah! We dancing! Everybody's dancing, yeah! Join when you create, we dancing, dancing! Join me, we dancing, yeah! We dancing! Everybody's dancing, yeah! Join when you create, we dancing, dancing! Let down, yeah, we dancing! Join me, let down, yeah, we dancing! Join me, let down, yeah, we dancing! Rock, you're beyond, hey! Rock, you're beyond, oh! Shake, you're beyond, hey! Rock, you're beyond, oh! Shake, hey, 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 hey! Midnight! Join me, we dancing! We dancing! Everybody's dancing! Oh my goodness! Everybody is shouting, scream! Everybody is shaking! Say hello! 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 Hey! Let me see you shake it, eh, shake it, eh, shake it, eh, shake it! Ha ha ha! Ha ha ha! Hey! Yeah, we moving!
Uh, we'll make sure that the sound will be great, so don't worry. The sound will be great and we gave you the quality sound. The teams are working to see our best, they can give you the quality sounds. We have microphone push all over. So don't worry on the sound, we're just trying to see our best. We can get all the Iran audio. That is all we are trying to do, but we are making sure that we gave you the quality audio. But folks tonight, um, you know, one thing I want to talk about Unity Party is that, uh, the folks from Unity Party, um, actually those that in, uh, those that are out of Liberia. The unity that end, those that are out of Liberia, if that unity could be those that in Liberia, I think Unity Party could not, uh, uh, could not struggle to win election in Liberia. But we hope and pray that the return of the former Vice President will be great and we hope to see that.
The mayor wants to follow up on our, our, his, our greatest goal is a virtual, and you already know the charity. We can, we can introduce all, any of us, she is, she is, she is. So, on this, what I just want to say, you guys are welcome. One P three and one of those, you can always call, you can always, okay? Thank you guys, welcome.
On this instant protocol, I'd like to say, welcome to the UCL, um, the UCL. It's a place of home, it's a place of home, and we're hoping, we're hoping that all can rally around. And stand together for Liberia. This is about Liberia.
You ready?
Oh, yeah, I'm ready.
You ready?
After me.
Repeat after me.
I, I, let me ask her, can we have your only guy?
Alright.
Let me spell the speaker, please, let me spell the speaker.
Do something swear.
Do something swear.
That I will support.
That I will support with my whole heart.
Abol. Protect.
Protect Unity Party.
Defend.
Defend Unity Party.
Okay, folks. Hello? Hello?
Ladies and gentlemen, yes, well, we shall send for ties of this collaborative bond of the Unity Party. Here we are, time to put on your victory jacket. And let us march everywhere in this country. Come on, and move along with beautiful momentum.
I'll tell you.
Don't act like this, listen to the power.
The former Vice President of the Republic of Nigeria, and Senator of the Unity Party, and pastor of the South South, Jomam Wankai.
We don't talk about that.
Okay, go, go.
We can, can, can now see these things, as we have, as we have to pray, and you have, you have, I, 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 I pray. Thank you, God. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is now the station. With this excellent sale, and pastor of the Republic of Nigeria. Former Vice President of the Republic of Nigeria. And standard gentleman of the Unity Party. And we have in there, in this hall, in, in the beautiful city of, of Roma. Ladies and gentlemen. Uh, in every town, in every country, we want, we want to be, be, be recognition of, of the most high and, um, the most blessed. Who will, who will, in our prayer, of the day, the past, the past, the moment. This would be my surprise, to say, say, my good, my good surprise. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's a, just before we, we, we pray, pray. Uh, I'd like to, to everyone else, to record, to record it, to see, to see. Uh, here, here, so, so, you, you, from here, here, because of, because of, because of, uh, from four, four states. And your wife, is, 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 uh, so, so, I'll always, always, I'm, I'm. And this is one, this is one. Um, but also, also ladies and gentlemen, I guess, I guess, I'd like to say this. A few things, things, and then shout, shout. And this, this video, video, here. You know, you know, the, the sense of issue today, as we all know, and know, know. I've seen some of these things. And today, today, is no longer a special speech. Or supreme speaker by the other team. But it's one of violence, violence. And social, social. And that's, that's okay, okay, okay. My dear, my dear. For all of our, all of our people. And I would, I would want this kind of to be the nation, nation considered as the true freedom, freedom. When you're not even suggesting to have, have the true emotions that are in freedom, where can, can no longer worry about food on the table, table. And I would hope that your team will be able to do that for our country. Because, because you know, I remember when the president yesterday and Dr. Tendola studied his father. And he has that, he has that. In nineteen eighty-five, twenty. We listen to the message. And these messages are saying a song. So, so if you take the arm to our time of prosperity, ah, it is our work and prayer that we are able to truly interpret the dreams and aspirations that go, go. The ambition, this, this day for day, for day. And then we were saying about yesterday, yesterday was about was vibrant, mighty, fierce for the common, common. And so how to say that? Ah. Let us pray, pray. But you know, Allah, I could do it in English, but I can't, I can't to go to the great English language, that's a prayer, a prayer. So, so do it in Arabic, Arabic. At the end, and you what's the English, and shout, shout. Let us pray, pray. I hope to be there in the next turn of the year. Let the Lord know. Allahumma bi deh. 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 Again, again. For Allah, who plays this game, we are able to see this. Who plays the vice, vice, play against this. Allah, we actually, actually want to lead him to Christ, to Christ. To be able to see what's ahead of people. With understanding, understanding. With love, love. Ash, ash. Bless this heaven, this heaven. Bless our nation, nation of people. And all of our brothers and sisters. And in the morning, morning. We ask you to shout for our nation, nation. So at the end, at the end of the day, whatever this one says here will be fruit, fruit. Everybody, all of our, all of our people. In the name of Allah, the most gracious, gracious. Alameen, alameen. Thank you very much. You there, you there? After, after a prayer, prayer of my, of mine. Would like for all, everybody to stand up, stand up. And send the library now to the country.
Say, "After." "After," "after." About the prayer. "After."
Everybody stand up.
"After the prayer, I'll bring the song."
Anybody can stop. And I'm not, I'm not. Somebody can do it? Allahumma bi deh. 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 Thank you very much. And I, please have a seat. I will call on President Kumabo who will welcome us. That is mine.
Good evening, fellow politicians. Please, 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 my friend. Former president of the Republic of Liberia. Senator Bambay. Now, now speaking. Our, our, our. This is a very, very special honour to have a little bit of sweet tea, or, or and, and especially, especially the conference of the Republican Party. The Dallas, Dallas. And now, now coming. Ah. I would love to take this time to welcome us all to this hall of light. Where we will have the opportunity to interact with our senator male of the summer. Erica, you need it all. If you have ever had a cancer, a disease, this is a very important question for you to, for you to know. And I tell you, I promise you you will give it up. Again, welcome. And then I'll be giving it to everyone.
Thank you very much, President Kumabo. And without any further ado, I will now call on the national chairman of the United Party in the United States, of America and Canada. Ah, in person of Mr. Herbert Ryan. To make a statement. As Ryan makes it way.
This actually is great. Ambassador Phil Selimovakar. Our distinguished leader and senator. Long standing Asiatic servant of people of Liberia. Director of the State Department of America. Long standing advocate for peace, justice, and good governance in the Republic of Liberia. Flatman Jeff. Our distinguished people staff Jacob Kamikoli. Our head of media for the office of the former vice president Charles Manna. Leader and member of the United Party in USA and Canada. Ah, members of our allies, the the latter, the CPP here, brother. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen. Our leader is a man of the people. He always is accessible. And he wants to have access to use his people. So, everyone who follows in life needs opportunities to meet with the people and share ideas. Share what they think. Share their opinion. We stand at the pinnacle of crossroad in our country today. The situation is tired. Ah, somebody put it in the form that we are driving with cars. And it's very hard to see. The economy is in shambles. And since January of two thousand eighteen, what took a dollar to buy now takes three or four. Incomes are not rising. So imagine how people cope in that situation. Those in charge of managing state resources have decided to prioritize the personal wealth over the well-being of our, of our citizens. We all know about the sixteen billion that disappeared into thin air while mansions were rising out of the ground for those entrusted with state power. We saw twenty-five million dollars so-called mop-up exercise down in the back of pickup trucks at the red light market. And those in charge of managing the economy were taking lavish trips to foreign, foreign parts to enjoy themselves. In the meantime, our people seek daily bread, daily. In the morning, they don't know where that bread is coming from. Sometimes it's not coming until the evening. We are proud of the record of the United Party in managing the economy. From a budget of less than a hundred million in two thousand five to an excess of six hundred million at the end of our term at the helm. Those who were in Liberia in two thousand five know the condition of the roads in Monrovia, the Buchanan, the Ganta and communities around. Today, we've seen that. Those who were around in two thousand five know that there was no electrical generating capacity. We left that as a legacy. We, we see the airport as a legacy. People claim they could do better. But today insecurity reigns. People are dying. Auditors are getting killed. Crimes are being left unsolved. People live in fear and uncertainty. The rule of law is totally absent. It's state power by fear. A Supreme Court justice is removed because people didn't like its judgment and went outside of the constitutional process to remove him from power and receive the verdict from headquarters. Any society that does not build as its bedrock the rule of law is one that doomed the failure. Donor funds have been squandered. As a result, the confidence in the system to properly allocate those funds for the benefit of our people is non-existent. So we find hesitancy to come to the aid of the people. And this is resulting in direct suffering that is experienced on a daily basis. There's a cry for leadership in a country. People wish they had a different day. People wish they had a different team. But we are committed to the democratic process of governance. So we're coming back to the people this time to say, "This is not the time to say, 'If I had known.'" Now you know. And they tell us, "We know." That cry for leadership has been heard. The answer is here. The answer is experience, dedication, is patriotism, is understanding, is compassion. And he says, "Think Liberia, love Liberia, build Liberia." So how do we do that? How do we do that? I said to the Liberian people, "Level heads, clean hands." Let me hear you say it. Level heads, clean hands. I can't hear you. Level heads, clean hands. Level heads, clean hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, sir. I'm the chairman of USA, of United Party USA and Canada. And just coming in the room, I realized that there is the chairman of a member of the collaborating parties here. And person of Mr. Charles Manna from the Libertarian Party. Ah, we'll call on him yesterday to bring with him before we move into our program.
Thank you very much. The honourable Joseph Ivan Boeckner, Vice President of Liberia Emeritus and Chairman of the Collaborative Part, Political Party, the CPP. For a way of introduction, my name is Charles Manna. I represent the Libertarian Party here as the Chair in the circle. Two months back in September, we had our healthcare summit in Allen County, Liberia. And Ambassador Bogdan spoke to us virtually from Liberia. He expresses his desire for a healthcare summit which has to do with opening medical facility in the hinterland Liberia. The idea where you see in Monrovia, we have clinics and pharmacy all around. The Libertarian Party have a vision to, to engage the hinterland, to encourage people to provide those financial aid for those medical practitioners that are interested in opening clinics, pharmacy in the hinterland Liberia. So that was the essence of the summit we had in, uh, September. But I've written a tweet this today from the political leader of the Libertarian Party, Anadolu Kama-Lorius. And the chairman of the Libertarian Party in USA is the Peter Feeney. We recognize the position within the Coalition Political, Political Party. You are no stranger to the Libertarian Party. Why? It's true that the Libertarian Party is going through some I don't know how to term it, problem in the conflict right now. But the position of the Libertarian Party USA we want to have a dialogue. And I'm going to choose between Ambassador Bogdan and Mr. Cummings. We support the best candidate. So there will be a dedication from the Libertarian Party that will make that decision when the duty arrives. But I personally, I'm taking it back by the action of Mr. Cummings. by the action of Mr. Cummings, every chairman of the Libertarian Party in Liberia. He spent engaging, creating, bridging, and disdutability within the party. And so the official position here in USA, we are not going to officially work with this ability until we are convinced that it's on the right trajectory onto feeling that it's putting the interest of the citizens, the formidable party of the Libertarian Party, which is among the first three most powerful parties in the Republic of Liberia, until this ability is working in line with policy, until he reduces himself from the disrespect and arrogance towards the political leader of the Libertarian Party. We here in the USA are not going to recognize his challenge and are not going to work with him. So, my honourable members, I want to recognize Ambassador Bogdan, who take the time for coming to Minnesota. And so we wish that he will stay with us good morning and look forward to working with him and to break the barrier to all the obstacles ahead of him in the quest.
Amanda! Yes! Amanda! Yes!
In a quest to redeem Liberia from the hands of the vipers. We were there when we were Vice President of Liberia. We saw the professionalism of a Vice President, the maturity, the respect and honor, the health of state, and the way to which he carries out the position in the interest of the people of Liberia. So this is why the people of Liberia want to pay for that maturity, for that professionalism, and for that respect, experience, and international respect that we possess. And so if here representatives of the Libertarian Party are on our boat, I can say I am on our boat. The political leader of the Libertarian Party, Malazonu Kamalornes is on our boat. Mr. De Laun is on our boat, and we want to make sure to sell that place. So, my honourable members, thank you for coming to Minnesota. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Charles Ma, the Chairperson of the Libertarian Party in Minnesota. And we all know the party is a collaborative member of the CPP. Is there any other representative of the other political party, the Alternative National Congress in this room, just to get a minute or two of a statement? I don't see a representative of the ANC, so we'll move forward with the program. Calling on the Chairperson of the United Party in Minnesota, Mr. Fumbar Sherif, for a special statement.
You can say once again about Ambassador Ivan Boeckner, former Vice President of the Republic of Liberia and Chairman of the Collaborative Political Party. And I also want to recognize a special support from the Democratic Party. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I want to recognize three members that are there doing extreme work. And I would just go straight to say that on behalf of the entire membership, and I would want to recognize some members that are there doing extreme work. And first of all, I'd like to call on Benz Ma Kumafouya, Ma Kumafouya, as a colleague, can you please stand up? I also want to recognize the person of Janelle Ode, who Chairman. I also want to recognize Madras Delacan, Madras here, Senator General. I also want to recognize David Kobyah, planning Chairperson of the Democratic Party. I want to recognize the person of Jana Sipir, the Global Assembly Chairman of the Democratic Party. I also want to recognize Tanya Johnson. I want to also recognize Africa. I also want to recognize my sister, the person of Ms. Morris, can you please come up? Let me also recognize Sister Kumafouya. I want to recognize all of the leadership of Minnesota Chapter, the UPIS, can you please come up? On behalf of the entire leadership of UPS in Canada, I would like to take this time to say, I would have to thanks for your appreciation for your hard work, the service, all that you do to make sure that the UPS in Canada are working, you know, to maintain and to put, you know, very many more partners in overtime by your work. And we get over every side, we just want to say thank you for your hard work and keep on doing the hard, the good work, and then, you know, because we have a tax. And we all know that we always say teamwork is the best way. And this team, like you see up there right now, these are people that are responsible for the day-to-day activities and the stellar effort of the chapter and also working in all of, you know, all functions, if I would put it that way. I also want to say, I present you to Mr. Oliver Joseph Ivan Boeckner. I want to present the people to you, these are the people here that do much extreme work for the work. To keep the balance of the party, and so this time I don't want to welcome them, I say thank you, and thank you so much. Thank you very much.
You know, sometimes when you have a microphone, you become more mysterious. So I, in a better way, did not call the AFP. It's a member of the Collaborative Party. So if there's a representative of the AFP here, uh, can you please come up and make a brief remark? Is there any other representative of any opposition party in the, in the hearing? I take the silence as a statement of no. So it is my pleasure at this particular point in time to formally introduce a big brother. Somebody when we were hustlers, we look up to him in his time in the emancipation of the Liberian populace. We invited him to just give us a perspective of the political situation in Liberia as we get up towards twenty twenty-three. This individual needs no introduction. But for the mercy of God, which you have been eulogizing him by design. So I present to you the veteran, the ever-putting former Chairman of the Political Science Department of the University of Liberia, Liberia's French-Chef University, and person of Comrade, Veteran Alaric Topa. You cannot welcome Alaric Topa by just clapping your hands, those kind of way. Give the comrades a round of applause.
Amanda! Yes! Amanda! Yes! Sit down, please.
Thank you, Brother Singbe. Well, let me warn that it is dangerous to invite a classroom lecture before a more important speaker. Your Excellency, the former Vice President of Liberia, head of the Collaborative Political Parties, and political leader of the United Party, Chairman Dyan, officials, leaders of the CPP, a United Party in North America, the Chairman of the Board, the President, officials, the members of the OALN, brothers Kabakoli and Chastenada, who travel with the Vice President. The Vice, I don't say former. You're not enjoying how I'm talking. The Vice President is the Vice President. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, dear friends, comrades, I know that we are all here very anxious to listen to former Vice President Ambassador Wakhay. But it is equally important for our leaders to be gathered on what they hear from those of us who are the genuine leaders and representatives of the poor and oppressed people merely with the social democrats in the progressive community. So I decided to document and be gathered in what I say here today. Because in the era of social media, there are varying interpretations and mixed interpretations of what political leaders are saying. We live at a time when the availability of information is overwhelming. There is too much information on everything. We live at a time when interest in current affairs has grown very fast. We live at a time when social media is very active. And these are times when it has become very difficult to ignore details and rumors. Unfortunately, the increasing presentation of opposing commentaries and viewpoints has sometimes made matters confusing for ordinary people. Hence, on significant occasions like these, it is important to make a right analysis in order to complement the tireless efforts of young people in the media who are striving to make Liberia a better place for all of us. So can I allow me to make some technical remarks and substantive comments on the situation in Liberia? And these are general statements. For those of us who have lost comrades, brothers and sisters in the struggle for democracy, election in Liberia is not a plaything.
Come on, man. Say it loud.
Incidentally, election twenty-two to three will not be a palm butter of the party.
Say that again.
To be frank with you, it will be an act of confrontation in which one party will throw the order away and push it around. So this is not the time for elegant speeches in Liberian politics. This is not a time for rhetoric in Liberian politics. This is a time for us to say exactly what's on our mind. Let me therefore begin in a blunt way. During election twenty-two to three, the woeful CDC government of George Bia will fight hard to remain powerful.
Abash! Abash! Abash!
Why? Why? This is because, as in the words of Chastel de Tare, quote-unquote, "No business in Liberia is more critical than becoming president of a country." Yet, twenty-two to three will come and go, and Liberia will stay in here. So let those of us in opposition negotiate a whole together in such a way that will promote the interests of our beloved homeland, Liberia. And certain the interests of the country I will love so much, requires us to do so. This is certainly not a time to kiss each other goodbye. However, I want you to bear in mind that within the very reason why the CDC government of Mr. Bia will fight to stay in power during election twenty-two to three is the correct analysis of the misunderstanding in the opposition. Not only within the CPP, as we the social democrats in the progressive community in Liberia. The crisis in the opposition is a manifestation the crisis in the opposition is a manifestation of the crisis within the Liberian state that incurably corrupts itself. That is to say, control of state power has become a major source of accumulating wealth. Some might show that the competition for state power in Liberia has become a life and death struggle. In our judgment or in a judgment of those who are seeking power by all means through corrupt and wicked means, their judgment wishes wrong and problematic. Control of government administration has become a big, the only investment for most of the incompetent and unrepentantly corrupt politicians in Liberia who have no who have no other way to make money to live big life. That is why the CDC government of Mr. Wea and those holies and psychophiles who have used his popularity for the wrong reasons with present a party, state, and government as one fearful force that will continue to intimidate the population, the voting population, the attack opposition leaders by placing obstacles in their ways through all kinds of trickery, legal, in the intimate and dishonest means. Liberia is bleeding, and bleeding very fast. Liberia is dying. In order for us to save our country, we must get focused and have the courage to tell each other and ourselves the hard truth as we find useful ways to work together. In whatever we do, whether we agree or disagree, whether we say yes or no, whether we become stubborn or compromised, we must insist on the best interest of the homeland, the shoreline of liberty, and find unsavage ways of working together to save Liberia. Come election twenty-three, my friends. We must come together and bring impunity into account by harshly politic corruption and the killing of innocent human beings. We must bring impunity into account by harshly politic corruption and the killing of innocent humans. Let us stand together and demand justice and peace in the spirit of our constitution. Let us stand together and demand freedom of association, freedom of movement, and an honest country of balance in twenty-three. Let us stand together and save our democracy in Liberia. Now is the time. So let us relate and talk to each other with respect, try to understand one another, and come together and cooperate where we can in the interest of Liberia. Hence, we will serve in the leadership of the political class in Liberia have worked to do. My dear compatriots comrades, ones who have done a right thing to save Liberia from shamanish gaze was remade unshakable in our resolve. As part of the complications of democratic politics, it should be understood that it is difficult to understand a more man and predict what absolute setting the attributes that a particular man can produce all time. The electoral history of Liberia teaches us that a policy of competitors, when they seek popular support, might not might turn out to be distinct from their politics when they get elected. That said, when we distill the lessons of the past, therefore, we are required to study and learn something about the past records of contenders, political contestants, in order to form an informed opinion and gather opinion about whether or not to support them. I repeat, when we distill the lessons of the past, therefore, we are required to study and learn something about the past records of contestants in order to form an informed opinion, a gathered opinion about whether or not to support them. It is interesting that as we are talking about coming together to work for the Democratic Change in Liberia, there are others who are determined to make Liberia remain the way it is, to make Liberia become worse in its effect. In that regard, I venture to say, when we observe that it is really, others say that there is something shiny, then the debate is over. People have eyes, they can see. They have ears, they can hear. They have mouths, they can talk. They have skin, they can feel. We could easily say that if they are satisfied with their reality, they can continue to live it. However, political questions and complex emergencies are not get so easily answered. If we did that, we would be blaming the victim. Historically, our people have been denied education, good healthcare, job opportunities, housing, and roads for reason. They are impoverished by the circumstances where they can continue to depend on corrupt and infected politicians during elections. Undeniably, the regalia of the electoral process has already started. The composition of the Supreme Court bench, the composition of the election commission management staff, the monetization of politics, use of resources in the manipulation of the monetary regime. You need a bomb bomb. To all election twenty-three, we have work to do, my friends. And it will not be a palm butter or a bogey party, yeah?
Awaunja!
Say!
Say!
For this very reason, those who are associated with opposition aspirants and candidates, why carry a man, why, 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 uh, carry my selfish motives, need to reach in their very position. The words election twenty-three, the main word will be found in a free and not in the immediate surroundings of the candidates. The main word will be with fine expression, improper organization, proper management, the quality of the content or checklists for the holding of events, the proper execution at each and all levels. The meaning of election twenty-three is to be found in a need for the survival and dignity of Liberia. Self-education and voter satisfaction, campaigning in homes, communities, villages, towns, districts, counties and cities. The spreading of election awareness materials, the spreading of educational awareness materials, the making of constant telephone calls that is safe for this will be mainly in the diaspora, with our people in humble and respectful ways, these will be some of the activities to carry out. Today, Liberia is at a crossroad. Whether we go left or right, whether we go ahead or backwards, will all depend on how we answer the difficult questions before us. From our side, we the social democrats in the progressive community in Liberia believe that in order for Liberia to get on the right path, the political class will need to negotiate the best way forward in the best interest of our country. I'm sorry to say we are both against that. First and foremost, in the interest of country, enough is enough. The Wea administration must be given a red ballot in election twenty-three. Mr. Former Vice President, Jacko Patricks. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, history is not only the path led by the past. History impacts the person and can direct the path of the future. They will pay key attention to the lessons of power. It will pay key attention to the lessons and power of history. We found that the presidency in Liberia is extremely powerful in very interesting ways. The rise of the powerful presidency in Liberia gives unique context to our political culture and system. We come from a country where the president and the presidency can become a negative fruit. But on the other hand, it can also serve as a positive force. After election twenty-three, as always, the direction that a leader will take is what will finally make or break Liberia. So how we select and make that experienced, knowledgeable, hardworking, compassionate president? And guess how without president Lee, Liberia in the right direction? Those are some of the difficult questions that we are compelled to answer. Liberia needs a leader who can listen. Liberia needs a leader who can think, stabilize and unify our country. Liberia needs a leader who will bring back our respect in the international community. Liberia needs a leader who will put us to work for national social and economic country development. Liberia needs a leader who will help revive our indigenous languages and the best part of our culture. Liberia needs a leader who will inspire us to work day and night. Liberia needs a leader that will help us to understand that no matter place a woman or a man for sleeping unnecessarily. We need a leader with wisdom and vision. We need a leader who would touch hearts in a way that will bring national unity and reconciliation. Liberia needs a leader who will stop the weakling motivate and assist lack of innocent people and take the sense of action to set the future of the youth who have lost their home. Ladies and gentlemen, let me remind you at this stage that I am not a member of the United Party and that I am not a member of any of the other constituent parties in the city. And the head of National Democratic Coalition LDC, which is the oldest coalition in Liberia, and the founding chair of the newbie movement, the only political party that was formed during the administration of Charles Taylor, the fearless tarant, never did this, do not allow a terrorist to deceive you. I come from the heritage of the indigenous chief to see. We are the owners of Liberia. So we are the ones that God and our ancestors have given a sermon to save Liberia at every critical turning point. For those of my friends and comrades who always encourage me to stay in the United States, for example, please do not take me out of context. There are many young people in all of Liberia that have good reason to be in America in the diaspora. But if I speak for myself, I do not stay in another man's land because it is shiny and a mar- a marabou. Yes, in Liberia, they are conservatives, they are liberals, and they are radical. Of course, western have worked for profit. We the progressives have usually worked for the people. But remember, we are human beings too. It is just for the love of, for the love of country, we made a choice to struggle on the side of the oppressed for political freedom and economic justice. Because of that choice, we prefer to die poor and report this story to our heroic ancestors in struggle. But this is not a time for that debate. This is the time to continue negotiating the best interest of country. This is the time for us to come together and save Liberia. That said, it becomes clear that the so-called generational question is not applicable in this critical period in our national history. There is no theory in political science and government wishes that a younger one is the age their better leadership, he or she can provide. There is no theory in the science of revolutionary politics that which says that the older you become, the harder you are political, which brings you wealth. Even if that means between the struggle for political freedom and economic justice. Of course, in a progressive community, there may be hangers-on and inconsistent elements. But comparatively, we have a bonus of evidence from the South, the conservatives and liberal opportunities that some of those who may be younger in age are more corrupt, wicked and destructive than some of those who are older in age. This is the truth. Good leadership requires sensible ideas. Good leadership requires vision, wisdom, and commitment to principles and values that our people center. Good leadership requires the ability and will to do what we say we will do for the people and for the sake of country. On the contrary, good leadership is not to be found in reckless and sinister strength or roguish and criminal behavior.
Come on now.
No, we know, and know. Therefore, with these general observations, permit me to closing to escort you on a tour of immigration into the future. Should the truth be told, if the political class does not come together and summon the courage to negotiate the best interest of Liberia, if the political class does not stand together in disassailable idling to save Liberia from banished and scots, one day, a curious cat from among generations of born will rise and ask the very question that we should be asking ourselves today. What really happened to the black African people of the shoreline of Botee that once existed on the west coast of Africa? If we do not add discussively and selflessly at this juncture, it is highly possible that in answering the question posed by a curious cat in generations to come, it will be said that the people of Liberia forgot their history and so they died. May all mighty God never allow this to happen to us.
Let's give the Professor a round of applause. I know that we seem to be at a point where we are understanding that we press my time. And because of that, we're going to take some stringent measures. So just so you know, we are in flight. That said, two minutes at every juncture except for the guest of honor. So we're going to move quickly. By way of information, this event is being carried live on SPOOM TD and SPOOM Communication Network. There are five radio stations in Liberia that are airing right now. And Liberia TV, the gentleman before me is also carrying this program live. So this is a program of interest, of concern, and of knowledge base in the interest of the people. That said, we will now invite to the podium, Mrs. Leveling Shedy Komion. And she will introduce the introduction of the Vice President, former Vice President of the Republic of Liberia, Joseph Boika.
Good evening, everybody. Honorable Boika, welcome to my seat. Profile of Joseph Boika Senior. From a humble beginning to a national hero, the profile of honorable Joseph Gima Boika stand the bearer of the Unity Party Vice President of the Republic of Liberia. His Excellency Joseph Gima Boika Senior is a genuine people-centered nationalist, patriot, and dedicated public servant who has served his country and people dearly genuinely for more than thirty-five years. Honorable Boika has served in several positions in government and the private sector while he left immaculate records of performance and dedication. He is a profound family man and a devout Christian a demon in the Baptist church. Throughout his years of service to the native motherland, Vice President Boika has been very meticulous and demonstrated exemplary qualities of environmental magnitudes left unimagined by most of his successors. Honorable Boika was born in a very remote village called Wosaka in Foyo District, Rupa County, on November thirtieth, nineteen forty-four. Our leader is a character of extraordinary personality and unwavering determination. He has exceptionally resisted the test of time. Challenged too hard to summon situations from a humble beginning to rise to great heights into a denigrated national hero. He symbolizes the struggle of the ordinary Liberian child and epitomizes the virtue in courage, determination, and perseverance as a boy from the farm. The immense contribution of honorable Boika to the nation triggered his invasion by Madame Ellen Johnson Sully as vast stand the bearer of the Unity Party in the two thousand and five general and presidential elections and subsequently elected as Vice President of the Republic to Madame Ellen Johnson Sully as President. They have both won two elections and have since been instituting a number of structural reforms in the politics and the governance state. The magnificent progress they brought their own state threat saw Liberia a fish hatch from the dungeon still lapse into unrecognizable ways within the common of nations. Vice President Boika has continued to work along restoring law, repossessing the country, restoring and improving basic social services and improving the country's investment. As Vice President, Honorable Boika, Vice President of Liberia, then he presides for the standard preliminary two days a week. Prior to his incubancy as Vice President of the Republic, Honorable Boika served Liberia in the following positions. Residence Manager of Liberia Produce Marketing Corporation, LPMC, nineteen seventy-three to nineteen eighty. Managing Director of Liberia Produce Marketing Corporation, LPMC, nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-two. Managing Director of Liberia Petroleum Prefining Company, LPRC, nineteen ninety-two. Minister of Agriculture, nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-five. Critical achievements per assignment. Critical achievements per assignment. Obviously, as Minister of Agriculture, Honorable Boika was responsible for national agricultural policy formation and implementation, support, research, and regulatory services in the sector. He monitored activities and chairboards of over twenty agricultural development projects, the Agricultural Cooperative Development Bank, and support institutions. In a period of one year, Honorable Boika chaired the Fifty Nationwide African Rights Development Association, WADA, and toured research projects of WADA in Sierra Leone, Africa's beginning design. He also toured several agricultural projects in Denmark, Belgium, Great Britain, Malaysia, and Africa's in combination with poultry, cattle grazing, rubber, and oil palm production and processing. He also assisted in the first PL four-eighty program evaluations for Liberia. His services at LPMC were marvelous. He served as Chief Executive Officer and the first Liberian Managing Director of that entity. He was responsible for export and marketing of coffee, cocoa, and palm cannel, what we call palm oil, while at the same time arranging purchases, shipments, and handling of the PL four-eighty programs from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-four. Counting on the depth of knowledge, experience, and expertise of Honorable Boika, he was requested to undertake short-term assurances in several institutions, including the following. Chief Technical Advisor on Agricultural Policies, Ministry of Agriculture. Review and evaluated the Liberia nineteen eighty-six proposed grain revolution. Vice President Boika is also a great humanitarian and philanthropist. In a civic and self-help sector, Honorable Boika supervised a personal fund as up to seventy-five percent of a seven-mile rural village road construction to his hometown of Wosaka. He worked with the Federation of Liberian Youth, FY, and the Danish Youth to construct a school for one hundred and fifty students and clinic for a community of ten villages. He influenced the erection of OIC project in Foya Kama and organized and headed fundraising for rural electrification of Foya Kama in local county. Honorable Boika has served as member, Chairman of many boards, including Chairman Liberia Farmers and Trust Corporation, Chairman of the Board of Star Radio, Member of the Board of the OIC, Member of the Board of the Liberia Baptist Geological Seminary, founding member of the Bresto Christian Mission, founding organizer of African Methodist Episcopal University, founding organizer of the CWU Methodist University, President of the Monrovia YCA, President of Lusu Resource Corporation, and ex-president of the Monrovia Rotary Club. He has been happily married since nineteen seventy-two to Katumon, Katumon Wa Boika. This union is blessed with four children who included three sons and one daughter. He is the owner of Lusu Resource Corporation and co-owner of Agro Machines Liberia. Ladies and gentlemen, let's join me and let's welcome Honorable Joseph.
This is the chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the former Vice President of the Republic of Liberia and the State Leader of the Unity Party. At this, at this juncture, I'd like you to know that immediately following his brief opening statement, there will be an engagement with him. So the brief statement may not be sufficient, but your conversation with him will flow through the process so that you get eliving into his vision for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much. Let me recognize this hall of honor. Our most experienced lecturer who had visited through our house this evening, Larry Trooper, want to thank you for the presence here. The Chairman of our party, the pastor, or members of the party, leadership queen. And out of our appreciation, our women leadership want to thank you for being here with us. You know, today I have just said in the other line something that in this broken fact, there's only one path to unity party because we don't have any A and P, no A and P. So our congratulations for our people to be unitified. But we are here this evening to create a tradition. A tradition, and you don't think this is just happening here. It's part of our caution that when you as a stranger you go somewhere, they have a town on you and you ask what they knows and they tell you and they also ask you about where you coming from. So this is part of our tradition. We have honored this tradition not only here but even in Bahrain, Philadelphia, Afghanistan. So I want to thank you. But when you listen to Kapaduanya, Larry Trooper, and Charles also of the Liberal Party, you don't have to even ask any question because every one of them have laid out the issue of Liberia. That Liberia, where we come from. That Liberia, when the south going every night and day. That Liberia, all of you here are one point in time, living. Came here with a single objective of trying to prepare ourselves to go back to serve our people. That's Liberia, we felt, and we're after that here, we will be there. So I want to say today that I'm not here as a guest speaker. I'm not even here to speak and here to respond to some of the concerns, some of the things you've heard. Because I have spoken from research and from information. But for me, we are coming from there. We live there. We pile the everyday life. They experience about that. Sometimes we don't want for you to talk about whom and what you have given. Let's forget that we all, this town, we live there. And they know what all of us feeling. They know that we still have no feeling. It's not about a party, the way you belong. It's a matter of what our rights are, what we entitled to, and whether or not we getting there. In the midst of, I heard that the man talked about economic emancipation. We don't lack anything like this. All of that. The only thing we lack is leadership. We are in trouble. We are hungry. We are full. We are dining. Yeah. If we are driving, going to maybe a five, we cross more than twenty-five bridges. What are there to give electricity to all those communities? The soil is there. We test our food. We produce food. We are exporting coffee, cocoa. And our people are living comfortably. They could have improved their lives for the years. But you know what we're going to do, but are we to always sit and complain as to what happened to other countries that have similar problems? If I war, the one thing that we don't have in ourselves is your dignity. The law is comfortable. That no matter who we are, we part of the love, we all come from our country. And that's why, one night, I just got to know thing like this, love like this, and deal like this. Because from thinking about country, loving the country, you know the next thing you do is to want to be there. So we are here today in the in the United States, where all of you are. A lot of people, by the way, which I just like before that you have everything. But you live for two different communities. You live here. You have to live here. You confront with love here, but at the same time, you got to know that you came from a village, you came from somewhere, you have a vision. Unfortunately for you, we have cell phones now and we don't even know the time to call you. Definitely, we get up, we call. And you send fifty dollars from somebody complaining, I don't hear anything. They don't even know what they take, they make fifty dollars. This is the reason we have to make home. But it's true. That home can be as good as here. It's not maybe with all of what I have. But Nigeria can be a country. You can live somewhere and live there and live happily. Our people can have good drinking water, the roads. But for hundred and seventy-four years, sometimes we say we live in the same land, not true. If hundreds and forty years, everything around you includes, not everything is the same, right? We are living worse than that. And that's a country where we are not supposed to talk about. But it is traditional, you know? When you slap a child, you say shut up. You know, slap people and say shut up. And so we are here today thanking you for our opportunity to be here for all that you do to keep life home, your relationships, and what it is that everyone people. Some people have given us grateful and you do it anyway because of your relationship and your society. Today in Nigeria, every day people are in here in the streets. Here every day, the fourth day. And we all are supposed to shut up. Today in Nigeria, the hardship. I listened to a family that came to me one day and said, we are buried now that we eat three times a week, can you imagine? You can choose to eat to take about three times a week, but we eat three times because of hardship. And we are not supposed to talk about it. You get on our streets, something I should have done accomplishing, ten minutes, it takes three, four hours. And you say you want investors to come there. And so we are here today to listen to your concern, to answer your questions. And we do it honestly because we are not in basically cause one of them. But we feel like our people say, if one month, I speak for the third month, they are about sleep hungry. You know, you go somewhere as a stranger and you sit in a, you know, I have people who don't have food for me. Somebody might say, the stranger had nothing about me. Somebody might say the stranger had nothing, I don't know why you just said that. We are supposed to speak for our people. Because, yes, we can make it. We are trained and we are prepared. We have reached the time, we can make it. But you just step there with outside the road and see the roads, see the condition of the people. The people that you have lived here. I can't say more than that I mean, a large and said that our country is bleeding. My appeal is that let's forget about who we like, what we belong to. Look in the South region, this is a country people used to pass through for their visa to come to the States. People have told me, if you wanted to go to the United States, you know, you went to Liberia. Today, that's under condition. Just go to go on our side. After that, you go to freedom. They have two, three toll booths, payable. These are people that use a lot of tools. That's a country, brilliant people, that you represent. A country in which the US can make a lot of this. The Romans have, and listen to this, we have been here, they are making in Basra. For the first time I'm here in Basra, hopefully they say, you are sitting in the dirtiest, the filthiest in Africa. You are saying by extension, and the filthiest in Africa, obviously the filthiest in the world. And you say the guy insulted. It's not what the people say to you, what you, you know, the truth that they say about we are not happy. Not because we cannot make it, but we're not happy because in the midst of the darkness, our world suffering. Our people food prices are rising and they achieve rates, of course you have to buy where the money they achieve it is getting lower, the people think it's a good thing for some people. But that means the prices are increasing every day to move from one place to another is becoming more difficult. So we are here to just say to you, I, I, I call it, you know, have a mind to come here. Tomorrow, we're going to Arizona where we have good friends who are loading containers there with medical facilities, medical item of ten icon of people. Go to some hospitals and fresh there, so and we will cut roads, we will, nobody cares. I have a group of citizens in place, but I hate respect it. No one cares. You have to be a part of it, really, as a policeman, you have to be a part of it. Now I tell the police sometimes when I talk to them, I say that I have not a funding license. That guy is for you to protect. But they didn't tell me the problem, they are destroying our market unit. Even for themselves, they have their own constitution with what high. But the first year when they became master, they look like citizens, but when the time was spent, they will have a massive association. To put their pictures together. God will justify all that to you and you. The legal foundation, the legal law firm. The face to our head before a big structure, so they give them money to be able to log on and have themselves. The rating below will be higher if you do not participate. You get a piece like this. Wouldn't do that limited party? The country is for all. If you want to have a toy, not to be even part of members? It is not a easy thing, it is not fun. Liberia is in trouble. Six years ago we are, we can just forget it. One time I went to, during a container, I like to cook over. And I said, Liberia, we are war. And we are the goal. We are, we are W N W. And I said one for the rest. That's great, that's exciting. That with all the kick around Liberia has had, you can't give it to a person enough of what I will get, the guys kick. You can't sit here and what you came here to learn, you give it to a country that already has, where you don't have the strength to provide, you give it to your country. You have to try to understand that. Some people think to aspire to a presidency is seeking power, it's not that. The thing that is chasing you, if you doesn't stop running, you still start running. Our country is in trouble and they need leadership to redeem it. It's a redemption. And peace. And all of us should be a part of it. One of my, you can do everything there. And I tell you, if by the time you get to Rawa City, you forget all the good things that like I tell people who come from our country and they want to come to Moro Bia to see coast, C O E S, come over and see trouble. So Liberians, let's put aside our individual differences. Think about our country, because no matter what you do here, one day you want to come back. If I walk, the better the country, the more often you want to go there. And that's our concern. So we are here today to thank you, particularly your time to assemble here. It's in the cause of our country. It's something to think about. United Party of the Power, it wasn't that way. It wasn't that way. And nobody expected a United Party would do everything it was intended. Every time they say, oh yeah, well, you didn't do it, but that's what you came for. To do it better. You didn't come to, to, to do it worse. So go ahead, that's what I'm doing, I tell you. This is no fun. We would not have a country in six years over there. Country doesn't care, and they don't care. Inside they tell people, I have a United Party for here, I used to do it here, we don't care, we're here to chat. It's our time. So we are not here to give you a lot of those because from there. We are here to tell you, we need your support. We need your concern. We are here to work together to rescue our country. That's your country, that's my country. Because you're not there and you don't own it. Because you pay money to keep it where it is. But we want to create an environment for the people to be able to live for themselves. You can't go every day to somebody else to go there for bad ones. When you can produce it, we've done it before. Farmers are earning money. We have the L C A D P, the B C A D P, M C R D P. Or farmers who are lending, lending, buying vehicles, so that they can afford it. So I want to thank you for this opportunity. These are the main bodies. We are here and I want to say in this open manner, I thank the people of Brokenback, the center, all of the community. And also I want to thank you people because you have to be a good citizen, but people that come out here, they have given our people a lot of opportunities. And as somebody sitting here that you're saying you want to translate them back home, but you can't go there and tell them to do it, the environment must be there. But I want to say to you, thank you for being good Liberians in the dashboard. Thank you and I guess for assisting us. We get worried when we hear about sending you back home, I always say, it is good for you to say, achieve it's here over here, they are proud of you. Want for you to decide to go, you can go. Meaning and concern because the more many being, a lot of people there also suffer, they every day will not have a future. So thank you for having us. The year will be tomorrow, the American governance, few. It's like whatever the president goes to everywhere. He's talking about the world crisis. We don't have this. So Liberians, let's wake up. And think about our country. One thing about the children, your children, by the time they go there, they see the free environment, they don't want to come. But you can't keep them there, no good schools. And we can sacrifice anything, we can sacrifice our children's future. And that's what people, most of the people here. We want a good school for our children. We want good hospitals for our people. They are not there. So let me thank you. There are large speakers have spoken, and I'm sure there are many questions to ask. But we are here at your calling. Even while we in Liberia, whatever you do for us, we do it for the country. And that's why, when we go to Arizona, where we some years ago signed nine employees. You may tell about people. You are looking for money today, you are looking for house. I'll be my house, ten years, we get fourteen. Forty years and nineteen year too. I don't matter about your house. Because when you look all around, you know everybody is suffering, well, I don't think we have money. However, it's to change the life of our people for the benefit of their country. Thank you, I thank you. That's all I have to say for now.
Listen, this president, former vice president of the government of Liberia, he offering voice of wisdom as something to think through. It is your time to engage. You've listened to him. This is your opportunity to express your views, concerns, questions. The order of the questioning process will be this way. We have the microphone over there and another one over here. We'll take five persons in the row at a time. My honorable vice, former vice president, his successor, Joseph Mabwaka, will take your question and he will respond to those questions in a corner. Having said that, I want to ask you, please take your respective seats. Please take your respective seats. Your opportunity to listen to the vice president. Raise your concerns. Ask your questions. If there are issues, please raise the issue so we hear that. Remember you have to do it in a very orderly and respectful way. That said, we cannot go to the microphone over there, we have the microphone right there. We'll take five questions at this end. Five questions at this end. Now, we have, we have prepared our order. Notwithstanding, it is possible for us to take questions intermittently. So if you have questions outside of our arrangement, we will accommodate it. For the time being, we're going to be starting with agriculture. Is there anyone in the line who's interested in asking question on agriculture? Anyone in the line who's interested in asking question on agriculture? So the vice president will mount the podium and will respond to your questions. If not, we'll take any question that you have, whoever is before the microphone. I'm going to go on my left hand side first and then I'll go on my right hand side. Please call your name and state your question.
Good evening, honorable president. Please get another phone, you know, that's a little bit. Good evening, honorable president. My name is Jyadwam Bali. I'm a Liberian and a resident of Tawak. One to one.
It's okay.
I should go ahead?
Yes.
Um, I came here today with a lot of questions to ask you. But because of the time, you know, we did not stop the time and I felt a little bit disappointed with the fact that, you know, we came here with weight.
Weeks ago, there's a report to a state of Minnesota here and people asked him about corruption. He spoke very eloquently about corruption. I can't quite corruption stuff. I listened to you all the time and you are speaking, you are speaking very eloquently about corruption in your fight, I think. We all do that corruption and some manners in Liberia. But my question here is, would I, uh, would I, the speaker to have your access to the vice president's place? So if you're comfortable, then you can please find a different man that could ask you the question.
Uh, thank you. So I'll go to my question. Like I said, my question had to do with corruption. And the judiciary, a few years back, Ellen came, I just want to respect a little bit, to give a good respect to my question. When Ellen came to power, she launched a vigorous fight against corruption. But that did not yield any result. And we are looking for a time that government are going to put. And we are one cases against people. And one of the biggest problems is their fuel process, their fuel process weakening our weapons. And now, we are looking forward to be included in the day to assume power in Liberia. If you assume power in Liberia, what we thought, will you introduce into the judiciary that will make it more robust in fighting corruption? Because you can see everything here that you will fight corruption, but when it comes to the law in Liberia, there are laws on the book that will weaken your fight. I'll give you one example. One example of that was with the asset declaration when the UN forces asset in Liberia. And I, I think it's wrong for people, I want to put a perspective to my question so that you understand and not just ask the question. So I want to be very strong and believe to do that.
Okay. Um, we, we, we are working and it's time, we have this situation for a certain time. Uh, would like for you to get a rest question and let's give the lectures for another day.
Okay, would you feel like, so honorable Bwaka, I just want to know, with all these laws that will happen in the book that in he, you know, the judiciary process, when you become president in Liberia, what will you do differently for other people to really fight corruption? So we can see, and we can see the example, I say, honor president Bwaka, this person went to jail because it's through government money and not passing ever. What will you do?
We will go on the other side, the next person.
We'll take your questions. After the question, we have one more, one, he will watch when I will respond. So he
Thank you for the opportunity. Welcome, Mr. Vice President, uh, Ambassador Bwaka, thank you very much for the lecture this evening. My question is, you talk about working together and that does, at the core, some of what have divided us and the people. So my question to you is that, in terms of survival of the C P P, the C P P is an institution that was put together, you are fundamental of the C P P. What is the proposition that the C P P will survive as an institution to challenge the rear in twenty twenty-three?
Next person.
Thank you very much, next question.
Uh, before please, please take your lead. We will get some questions from one person in our.
Thank you. And that's all we have for the group. Mr. First president, I want to say welcome. We have been through the year this day. I have two questions. And my first question I have to do with this character situation in Liberia. We know that when people are vocal, unknown men go after them. My first question to you is, after you are you, by your life, I've got running for the high office in Liberia. That's my first question. My next question, I will make just few, my people go to a please. I have been praying for Liberia for the past four years. And to be frank, I have never supported you. But God showed me you. And I showed me you. It's the last leader for Liberia. So if you go on Facebook page, you will see that I've been speaking for the past four years. And I'm still speaking. As I'm speaking now, I'm about to, we are about to go into two years prayer revival for Liberia, beginning in a state of Minnesota. But I want to know how spiritually are you to go through what we are about to go through? Because what Liberia is going through is not just political, like Mr. Alaritogas said, it's not bombata and tawaghi. We are fighting forces. We are fighting. We are fighting forces. For you to have confusion in your midst is not normal. We are fighting ancient spirit. My wife here know I was attacked a couple nights ago, but we still go with it. But how spiritually are you to go through this race? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take one more question. Honourable vice president will respond to those questions that you ask and then we'll go to the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know you, at first, were kind of like a share in corruption. You are constitutionally not to have the right to be there. We have to separate the power. Just think about, I've seen that in our country lately that, that thing lying at the bird, because it looks like people only care, where they're in the legislature or the judicial. But then, you look at a judiciary, so that like, you know what is happening there? Who is it that persecutes? The people are elected for like that and they are unable to face. So when they don't respect the hope of opportunity, what do you need? So what I have always said, in Liberia, what we needed is strong, strong civil society. Because when you speak, they say you're a politician. Civil society, including your own voices. You've been following what's happening in the country. It's like, whatever president say, good or not, how do you handle that? You are an individual, you don't have a boss. These people are on their own to serve the country. And when they don't do it, what do you believe in? And that's why we said, they are both disappointed from outside, like, I mean, large set people. We cannot be afraid, because what you're afraid of will happen to you anyway. So the judiciary and the asset declaration is another thing, but that's hard done to know with justice judiciary. When unity body could come out, we all declare ourselves and we read it. Today, the president of this country, a leader, a leader of investment, is he declaring disaster? Is he above the law? That's what we talk about, the leadership. It has to be leadership by example. If you notice the way we're doing, if we start looking for other people, if you think we're also there, our country is ready and that's what is happening. The things are on the boat, but nobody cares. And who's supposed to import that? Find them working here? Are we trying to make them work there? That's the problem. So the judiciary, our whole system, the separation of power, we provide an opportunity here. It's not shit. But you need leadership to make sure that that happens. You need a strong civil society that will make sure that that happens. Do we have more demonstrations for injustice in the society, Lord, he gave it to us? People have been compromised. So how do we do it? People believe that they are saved by not acting, but we are not saved. We all are doing what we do have. So that's the problem we have. Now you're talking about enforcement. That's what's supposed to be corrupt people. Should be the advice. But who is going to approve? Because you have to go through a new process. Is that available? So we're talking about a system that has been great, a system that has been compromised. And that's probably the one, a leadership that will make sure that those things happen. One of this administration, you can forget it. Talk about if we do work together, we are well. That's why we can forget it. But you know, the CPP can not just work together. If even within the CPP, and we don't want to see, then we don't do it right. And that's why, when our leadership is committed, to make sure that it works. Of course, it will work if we all recommit ourselves to the purpose of which we came together. And when we came together, we didn't say it's for the big values for the small values. We came together as a collaboration. Isn't that collaboration? We should, we should be doing things the right way, against the opposition, not against ourselves. So that's the conscience that I bring to the leadership and want to make sure that we call our colleagues to see the need of this country. To give an alternative to people like you. We have to understand that. Now you're talking about the security. The security, who appoints all these people? Who appoint people to defend? Don't move their loyalty goal. They're the same person? Because people have not found out that because the president appoints you, it's a teamwork. When you become president, you are putting a team together to serve the country, not you. But people don't understand and they think their loyalty must go, but your loyalty, if the people did not elect that person, how would you become loyal to that person? That's the difficulty with that. Liberia, loyalty to the president. I can be loyal to someone, the president doing the right thing with the king. So the country is the one that has been shut down. And so for you, I'm now his friend, for we thank you. And you know, we need to come to this point because we want to be president, but we see a void, just that you've been playing, we didn't find you. We know the role you played back home. A lot of you left and I see, uh, our co, uh, co, moderator here. He was very, very, very deep, but. So by the time they see that you're not loyal to that, you have to leave. They say this is our time. You go to Liberia today, where five people who worked here, they got fifty. Public corporations are generating money now. Because they think that's the way, that's why the king of our country. So how you generate revenue to fight corruption, to fight anything, patronage? And that's what we talk, that's all. The country is the challenge. Don't take it lightly. So all the questions you are asking hang on leadership, commitment to country. And now then, it is to the president. And the president, you wear all the killing and you hear and you say what, anything, you don't hear and you say anything. That one voice that is supposed to be powerful is lacking in our society. So people just think that that's the way to go. And you ask me about my life, no, all of us are taking risks, but we are committed to the country. If we don't do that, we will remain, we're not going to remain like this. This country, Liberia, is not going to be. And that's what we're committed to and we know very well that, with all of it, I know, I trust God and that's why I'm here. I always say, he who walks into a cold room, what happens, one from inside. We are committed to this and we know that none of them will lay hand on us. We believe that our people deserve. Our people deserve to be free. We have friends too. We have people who are concerned. They may be sad, but they are looking after us too, because they do want to be free. So when you think you are loyal to God and carrying them around, there are people who are there for God because of the prayer that they are offering. God will redeem that for the existence of God. We'll take another three on this side and another three on this side. So we'll start from my left hand side.
Well, thank you so much. Vice President Baka, my name is, uh, I'm from our, from our, coming to the United States with people. Uh, I am the president of the Lenggastra business situation. Also, along the inter-racial, the enemy, oh, seven of the most urgent. A few from the desert finally get to, who get into the dark years. And Iraq is going to Montana, just to maybe ask you two questions. Vice President Baka. As we have said, Liberia is bleeding. I go to Liberia three times, part of it, as a business practitioner. Liberia is challenged on the pillar. One, security. Two, access to capital. Three, opportunity. This is not something we are stockholding. Today, sixty percent of the old boy in Liberia will be a bum. From the UN TV report, fifty-two percent of the young boys who are vulnerable, called in Zogo, lack the opportunity. Today, the microphone and institution bank are going to bend to rocks. Your money are in the bank, you can say, go and come back and give your money. How do you address the issue of the Liberia? Change the period, ask it. My two question, what do you want from us in the diaspora for your great friend twenty twenty-three? If so, what do you want?
Sure, turn, turn, go ahead, ask a question.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Gabriel M K from Ora Desen. My question I have to do with, what you are doing in a CPP along with, uh, Ben Diirek and Yombe Katalaris and Abraham Daras along with. You are in collaboration with a man who does not respect women's rights. You are in collaboration with someone who does not have what respect for women. And you are in collaboration with him?
Please talk in total team.
Why, I'm the person.
He's asking who's the person?
You. Yes, the time here coming. So that is my question. Why are you doing the same thing? Yes.
Next person. Please, please. Ambassador will respond, please. Next person.
Okay, um, welcome to our United States, state, honourable J M. I'm George of Brooklyn Park. My question here happened to do with, uh, you have been in the hem of power for twelve years on the, uh, in the party at my moment. And I can remember you made a statement that you guys had the opportunity, but it was twenty. My question to you, though you were vice president at that time, and knowing that come twenty twenty-three, you will be the next president of Liberia. How will you reconcile with your statement that you, when, when you were vice president, you squandered the opportunity when it came to you? And then lastly, CPP is actually a, a Mr. Tomer. When we are to come to leadership, how will you welcome to CPP and that to see, that come twenty twenty-three, our CPP will take over as the leading government? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll take one more question from here and then the vice president will respond with two questions.
My name is Hassan Afukwe from Minnesota. Welcome, honourable, Mr. Yungu Baka. My question I have to do with CPP, even though I'm not part of CPP, I'm part of J M D. All the chairman in the state, all the chairman in the state of CPP, then, we call party right now. So can you please tell the member people today, hey, CPP down low, what will be the next?
I was getting to the other hole.
Okay, uh, the honourable vice president will respond later after and we'll take another four questions.
We talk about security, it's true. And I'm happy you say that you are in and out of Liberia. So I don't have to tell. The police that go outside of police, train police in the street. Because they themselves are going through the challenges. Access to capital. Liberians, we learn about Liberia, their position. But everything is, is a bit, the Liberians, they will not have all of their economy. Economy is not handled like this. They don't have access to capital. The interest rates are high because the banks have to protect themselves. And it's true, if you go to the bank, some of you will send the nature of this. Somebody, a living journalist said, even the A P M machine, when you unlock it, it will draw money, it will actually nothing from you. This is, this is very true. There are occasions where you have to do it as vice president and they will call people, this, that, that, why he is coming to make the pass, come back again with government. That happened. Because your own money, you don't have access to it. So when you send money, the person had to have somebody in there to inform them, that somebody, they were hiding, that you come up with your own. These are all the issues that are bothering our people. The opportunity Liberia has? Very limited. Very, very, you see everybody selling smartphones. I mean, the whole city is, is a market. When you see an economy where everybody in the street selling, who is buying? Everywhere you go, you go right there, up over there, E R B C there, I came from E R B C one time, the whole place and it's so perfect, in the rain. When it's there, you see it. So we are seeing, these are the problems and these are the problems of leadership. So you're talking about the banks. Waste your money. Waste your money. When you have to have somebody there to tell you that somebody in the private, you can go with Germany. The diaspora voice is needed. Not cheap in praise, but encouraging our people there to understand that this country is a road to grind. And that's why we need you. Liberians are not going to take arms and things anymore. We need pressure, people voices, and people want, why do you think people that arrive every time I hear Alexander wrong? Because the people do not allow opinion to that decision. You'd say people sixty years old, and now they're using all of these, if they gave them some copper rice, it might be for loyalty. But one thing I know, I thank God for, they will eat a rice by nine years' age. They will ask, so, they will want all the countries for their soul. We had a bitter and a bitter, but Liberians are no longer going to be food. Because a bad rice, the national debt, the five hundred dollars given to the national debt. What they need is a change in leadership that knows how to lead by example, that will set the stage for them to have life of their children. Uh, you talk about the C P P, well, you know, it's not difficult, when you come together, there are no form to figure out, to say, why they're poor, or who you are going to leave it to. We're all in there, but they're Liberian people. But you know, uh, I can assure you, uh, I always say, when you go to the river, a ford is stucking from crossing, but it can't start from over again. So whatever happens in Liberia, we have a leadership vision of it. Leadership is incredible, the leadership that one day will postpone the future. Now, you talk about squad, that's it. You know, people don't like people to be honest. I have a bird when I'm part of something, and that I knew more could have been achieved. When they says, then they may want anything. Opportunities lost. To have made a country where it should be. Twelve years, you could have done it, you could have done it. And so when you say when there's opportunity, when, because I knew the worst corner, there are writing, I could have done differently, and I, I believe it. I use one example. If I'm a president, I would answer to those who went through, like you had said, that they need to put a smart, the fear of the world. Like, like Liberians, I won't rest until they have died, like, you see, things, you gave your time, you only have one opportunity, I can come here tonight, you don't take use of it. Yeah, use, use a wife or a son. First law is saying, when there's opportunities, you should call them. If you don't use it, that's what you do. If you come there, you go to school, and you don't go to school, you start getting all the junk there and doing them, time comes, when you don't have the energy to do all the junk, then what do you turn around? And you're a smart guy of the future. Vice president, every man, so what you didn't do with it? I like the way somebody attacked them. The folk have a vice man, they didn't do, the vice man supposed to do it. The Saudis have had all the full president, you say I'm a rule, president, the bad president. Talk about twenty, after twenty-eight years, is there a role to go there? Nothing. If you didn't do it, a vice man would do it. The vice president, the die of the senate without a vote, that's the time, the vice assistant, the president, if I'm supposed to assist you, I won't have your head put as you, and you say I don't want it, then where you are? You are sitting there, pressing my daily, you are sitting there, that's where it is. And you know, I was watching their brain, their reflection, and I found it. Before our mom, as Trump was dead there, they only believed in one president. You have two presidents. You can't have president, if, if you were there competing with a president, it would have been chaos. And who were going to be there? The same people. That's why you live in your name, you assist the president, and all in heaven know that you sit with the president, you have it. So after all, the C P P has determined, will do everything possible with the men of course. When we don't have men of course, uh, you can decide who want to do, but I can tell you, come twenty twenty-three, Liberia must have a leadership that all of you can attend. That's what you want, but it's a technical adjustment, we will take one question at a time. Put the blame on me, I've decided that the vice president will answer one person face to face, or if done with you, he will move to the next person. It's your turn, Maurice.
Thank you, Ambassador. My name is Maurice Brown. As president of the Republic of Liberia, will you recommend or oppose the P R S administration?
And my answer, I would be so happy, Lord. That's the top answer, and it's very good, so happy, Lord.
So we go on the other side? Yes, sir? Welcome, Mr. Vice President. My name is Gabriel, but my question is, when you become president of Liberia, will your children work in your mother?
Oh, sure. You see, I got a question before. My children would work anywhere, based on qualification, competence, and their mother. My children never got a job because of me. They went to school to learn to work for their country. So if the institution was, were to give them, on the basis of qualification, uh, the integrity, on the basis, I can't deny them the opportunity, but it would not be because of my children.
But, uh, the speaker is a gentleman, plus half time, we will exhaust the line now, and, the next thing is that we have a lot of community in this room, and we have asked that question from them. If, and we know they say they are smarter than the other generations. So we are asking you, if you have a question, please, uh, do not cut me the line, but just come to the front of the line and ask a question, then from there we'll continue. We also put the last, we put people to the last question and ask the question. Yes, sir?
My name is Peter, I'm from Africa, and I want to ask, welcome, Mr. Vice President. So, I want to ask a question of you now, because one like me is, I'm a producer, trying to be a manager, and I know everywhere that you have somebody that working that's part of the nation, and I know that Liberia is a country that have, that, so what will you do? What will you do if God bless, the kind of president to make like you want to be here, they come to food, because the economy, they are on chama, and all of this to produce rice. So what will you do if all of them have the farmers to produce?
I, I think, uh, no country in the world is creating people, and if you cannot help the farmers to produce, there's a missing link, why farmers are not producing. They don't even do agriculture, you don't have to have agriculture knowledge to be a farmer. What you need is the land. Uh, if I show you a video, I bought hundred and twenty-seven acres of land in Tupperboro. Because I saw people that wanted to farm, but they didn't have access to land. And today, if I show you my, they are harvesting rice, we give them rice searches, we empower them. But the system will be put in place, you must have technicians to work with them. And one of those things I mentioned again, and I have the letters, a hundred and twenty-seven we, farmers, employers, we have our horizon, when we planted the rice, they leave a green island, in a short time, they were turning yellow. Our people don't have, especially with this climate change, there must be technicians, there must be the opportunity for them to come, to complain, because people want to grow, they want to grow cattle. Because they depend on the technical knowledge of the ministry, having technicians who they can call, they go there. People raise beef, for example. They are not in beef, but they raise them, and they are dying, and they don't see anybody. We need technicians, extension agents that can go to advise the farmers. And I can tell you, we have to do school. When I was at the A P M C in Ophane, we banned bringing in any rice in the road. In fact, when the big job was happened, the, uh, the O A U, a meal price from Ophane, locked on the tree, they kept it there to feed the deer. We can produce it, but the system will be put in place to do so, and that also will be leadership. And why should we be holding code of war for cattle? I have produced my farm on the other side, you can produce them. You can't just be bringing everything from China, from China, from China, from China, where you can do low processing. Most of the food, when you go in our, in our market, they are there. There must be a mechanism to take the origin, to process them, to can that, of people who make them available, and they are all of them, and they're, and they're seen by our workers. But people must pay attention to those things, and that all part of what I can tell you in gold, I have a notebook, every day I jack down some of the things that can be done, and I wish you do, to make Liberia, that country, a big fish in its own way. So I can assure you, we can work, and we are working already, the women, the farmers, to have them produce, and like you're telling me, I think, uh, question will be, if some of the farmers are harvesting rice, and they're going, something they could, they will have it.
Okay, uh, madam?
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. My question, my name is Mieta. My question is, how do you intend to create jobs for Liberians?
Good, uh, you know, we think that, uh, we think that Liberians, we look at our and also, what we're going to do is let product in people to see what they have been in the conference. I can tell you, and I'm saying it all the time, the revenue that is being recorded is understated. We're not getting the right report. We can, we are generating more than that. You have to do right, the project, most of our projects are the payroll, there are no projects for investors. Investors are not encouraged. Some of the plans that I have been thinking about for the children, the street, the young people, at the moment, is that you can start doing that, I encourage, and it will be big on how credible the leadership is, how good traffic. One of the things I would contribute to our fact is agriculture, and that might have been said one time, A R T is. Agriculture, tourism, if you were now to go and encourage people, start the hospitality industry, start building hotels, the young people are doing catering and everything, they will move along with also cottage industry, where people will respond for basketball, the fishing, especially in that, keep money. We have the opportunity to create, uh, we have the opportunity to do that. Why should we be carrying furniture to Liberia when we have wood? Yeah, you start manufacturing, you just put a ban on the importation of furniture. You are still producing your own furniture, it has to be created. Every business in Liberia has a hidden furniture. Our people are in the retail, and the worst thing about it is that they are both in the wholesale and the retail. And I call a capital punishment. When you bring the thing, I buy from you, then you compete with me again, what else do you do? Jobs in the careers, agriculture, is some of the things that people are already doing, food preparation, food processing, in agriculture, the downstream things that can be done, but everything, juice, everything is brought to that.
Okay, uh, Mr. John, let me, I am the good guy, and you know, because the good guy don't want to present the message, but, uh, as a nephew to the old man, so I'm the good guy, so I'll announce something. See, if we got limited time, unfortunately, so we will, we will reduce our questioning to the two, two last persons, and then thereafter, the old man will close, uh, the vice president will close our statement. And, uh, since I got a microphone, I become a particular right there, right? So can I, I will, I will ask the ladies to come from and center. Ask their questions first, then we will select two men thereafter. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. My name is, yeah, I'm from Liberia. I'm in, amen. Mr. Vice President, my question to you this evening is, uh, I realize that many times when you go to the hospital, doctors do not diagnose you, and then the first thing they do is to hang drinks on you. Well, that's the boss, because here in the world, you know, doctors don't give you, I mean, nurses don't give you medications unless the doctor see you, you're going to tell you what is what. So I'm wondering whether something like that would be done. Number two, uh, few years ago, there were ambulances and fire trucks, I think, that were delivered to Liberia, but when, because we don't have road, people are building on the road, where you know, cars are supposed to go. I don't know whether the person who charged us, or whether they do it, if I deny you the intention. I don't know whether the person who charged us or whatever they do, if I deny you the right to. So do you need your time with their vehicles to stop people from building on the road so that ambulance and whatever instead of using windbarrows? Because the accident is shaking up so much, you already dead before you get to the accident. So I'm just asking whether you know these things will make a difference. And actually, I pray for you and I know God is going to make a way where there is no way.
Thank you. You know, interesting. Uh, when I go to places, I see the furious look on the eyes of people. They did the same question they're talking about. For us, we are healthy, we are strong. And if I didn't have the energy, I didn't have the strength, that would be the first lie I'd ever tell in Liberia. I would not lie to the Liberians. We are determined by the time they serve our people to set this nation so that people can see that Liberia was. Now, you're talking about building on the road. The rules are there. Criminal rules for people who sell land. You sell land, there are no havoc. You sell land, people can't get to the land. But I can tell you, as long as you don't have people implementing those things, they just won't. Some of you are borderline, you're red, you're red over there. They expect you to be looking like you're not there, nobody else will get on you. And when you go there, you say once, that they are out there, you're not getting out. No respect, impunity in our country. You live in countries that are where they are, where you can do that. You're not having anybody creating opportunities for everybody. The full implementation of the law will protect everybody. And I can tell you, for Liberia now, to start relaying all of it, you will have to have resources to pay people to demolish their houses. Right now, they're doing the rubbish to the road. There are people who probably don't understand the model. They tell them, yeah, we can only pay the terrorists. To take it out of there. Not a way to go to that. You would like them to do that to you, the problem. Another way to go. Leadership is a void of community.
Before you ask your question, there appears back, back again. The B I B has said that everybody who stood up and is standing up now will ask a question. Thank you, madam.
Good evening to all of you. Vice President, my question to you is that, and the reason why I ask this question. Coming up as a little girl last year, I was abused multiple times. And I was abused by family members that got away with it. So my question to you is that, for those little girls who've been abused, those women that's been beaten, that was wrong. I just want to know, what are they going to do about it? And are they going to be punished?
Well, we're talking about people who are worried they're abused and that's part of the poverty we have in our society. People who are not ready to protect in the smallest of chance. And this is happening among the top members of society. I think this is where the spirit of the job is on these children who future at new rather is to set up a system to investigate and to restore their dignity. Because we are in a situation we have to try to confuse them. And there here must be. And I tell you, these are some of the things that are jacked up about this country. And I promise you, none of these people do. We have a very rich society. I mean, you know, very well in the dark world, our women are respected. Today, nobody cares. See these little girls in the market selling things on their head. All the corridors needs protecting. That dignity of the women, the young people must be restored. Take you, and then you, please.
Good evening, Vice President. My name is Asasala. I have a question on corruption in public business. How do you fight corruption in the public business? Oh, especially when we take you back. In 12 years, you said, only have any, not any dozen, not opposition came on the issue of corruption. One of the early son, no car, wanting to force to retire. What was your position on that issue?
Always bad, what?
Position?
Did you ever hide the president of opposition? I can tell you, I can tell you, you check my record. You think I didn't know how to steam money? You think I didn't know how to do that? But I tell you, leadership, like, sadly, you got to start with yourself. You got to start with yourself. The Liberian people will see them. They will follow, follow, until they see you doing something good. For me, places I work, I tell you, I was managing pressure of P M C. You can ask Sando work with me. Cloud Car, whatever, I came up. He came to me and said, Steve, can we use the pickup? Government got to carry the body. I told him, I said, you're one person. You're one of the deputy. If you use the pickup, what would the rest of people do with the company? You see, you forget that once you do it, you make more than the people. If you can use public, you also have a personal thing. What would be longer rest on people? You have to have a system that will check yourself and be able to provide our leadership. Corruption is what God wants, where we are. And we are the evil of the purity, we are the evil corruption. People who have stolen, restitution, prosecution, after thorough investigation because the one other thing, you have to make sure that you are on track. Because if you check the right person, you do it, tomorrow everybody will be afraid. I have said, from the airport there, you put all these people who go with my to put cameras there, they're watching them, calling there. You get them by the red on there, you get there, then they will say, they don't watch you. You got to put a certain that you respect and be yourself, not an excuse. That's what we did. The reason, I tell you, the lock on the door is not for those people, it's for honest people. Because they know that there's going to be a dog in the door, trying to break it. But the honest people, they watch your time, they know when you go to sleep, they know your habit. They are the one who put the box. So that they don't check a box yet. You must go again. You got to walk a bit up. There's no compromise.
Vice President. Uh, so welcome to the ceremony. I have a question like in the West, in the West, again, I've seen a woman kind of signet called lobbyist in Africa, in rural specifically. Someone from a local signet called Inosoko or Klansman, whatever they record. Um, right now, you guys are, you're running for president and I think a lot of people around you feel that you're destined to be George Bia in his group. And then you guys get a facet, different product party, cause it and they, everyone together, Inosoko. If you have to win more, all of them will send men around which not come to signal the cost, and the lobbyists have again tempo. And after you win, when you have a problem with a place that is going to not come for needing, you will feel that you cannot prepare your harvesting. But this is when the voting together, the voting keep rising. So my question is, what would you do differently as president tomorrow, or 2023? What would you do differently? You stay in the same thing like everybody else president? Or, and my second question is that if you would land reform, land reform, small more, we all people say, land to 12, say seven tons, say all people land, nothing, you have done about it. Continue forward and forward. What would you do differently?
Thank you. What, what it's saying is, it's all human. And you also tell the way I say that you need people around you. But I can tell you, simply because people come around you to help you doesn't mean that you are an adequate force to that. Because you want a good country, you got to make sure you get the best of people. And that system should be put in place for screening and not judge the better people who are qualified technically, people who character can attest. If you don't do that, you'll be doing the same thing everybody is doing. And I can tell you, I don't, I allow everybody to come around. But leadership is to decide what is good for the people. And that's what we're doing. Now, you talk about land reform. The land reform, the land can be from there, they are working. They are open for responsibility because the land issue in Liberia, especially in Malooban, I have seen the new system in places where the pretty deeds, they do investigation. And I'm sure they have a huge backlog. But if we don't reform land, we don't ensure that people who buy land are protected and those who sell land are bad. One of the problems with land selling in Liberia, you have 200 acres of land. One day, you sell to 50 acres. They do not remember to remove that. And when they are tiring in health, they stay here with that 200 acres. They don't know, they are 250 already. So that chunking of land that is sold to be removed from that team to make sure that people don't buy their children and double sell. Therefore, and these are the things that create poverty in the country. So I see the land reform commission is working. We not know how or what. But I'm hoping at that area, we can get the right attention to make sure that people don't throw their money away. And this is not something you can just say, I will do this. You have to understand it in the reason.
Yes, sir. Thank you so, thank you so much. You know, I'm a fifty, I have money, I was a kid and independent, walk on party politics few months ago because I wanted to set my country in the country. Wanted to be free, but surprise myself, oh, no, come to my sphere because I don't loyalty to the party. But I really think all of you, they are coming here tonight, just three hours for the family to hire. In praise of our, what I have come to ask you a question. But the problem is there, my people to you. All of you, you are living a life that today in Liberia, I'm about to do towards you because you believe that you possessing the quality our country needs to be for. Your political alignment with C P P is junior. I can't make a sugar pour for anything around my world because I'm a young man who don't get the two pieces of adversity. I can't point to you today, publicly to ask you, as the member of a chamber in Liberia, when you get back home, call your team or insert the girl in divorce. Divorce, it's good for their marriage. When the men and women come together, they're doing goofy. If the attitude of marriage can't fall in the middle of divorce, or he's divorce now, we can run the horses behind you so that put it on the tree, the path of the person's sake will be wild. I said, you just stay with the C P P. The more you talk around, the more the C P P will talk to you, they all provocative. And without the strength of happy, you open a page or relaunch a person there. It's clear, you cannot hardly, you cannot pretend. The marriage is not falling. You pretend that a bit of structure is responsible for touching. Please with the P P, you ask for the protection you need from look for. Liberia is going to be voting based on, party is going to be voting based on what they're going to. And today, they see you as a messenger. I pray to yourself, the only prayer I pray that for which I pray, I pray, they refuse to speak.
My name, you know, we need a talk. You have got my attention, I've been finding you. You were here, you're already in five, sharing currently. This is happening. Because I believe that country can focus on everybody. And I follow you, Garn, and I just feel like the people praising me. I like to make sure that people tell the truth about me. And your concerns, let's talk about that. One on one, yeah?
We will, we will go for this and yes, sir.
Don't worry, don't worry, there will be light.
I gave to the rest six months ago. So I'm bringing now, just for Nigeria, six months ago. That showed that I knew the issue with Liberia very well. I'm a young man, I still have ID. But that sector is down. You go to offices and you see people still doing a bunch of papers for more office than never. If you pick up personally, what are you going to do in that sector? Secondly, we all see you as a older person and we think that you wouldn't say a volunteer. Not saying to the public, how long we going to stay in power? How long we going to stay in power? Because I see you growing older in your age. As old as 100 years. That's why I see you. So can you please tell me how long we of we have the trust in our country to your next for our
All right, let me share you on this right here. Let's play.
Listen, listen.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, if you ask a question, please, you want to respond, right? Let's give the vice president a couple of ideas.
Can I tell you? You must go to another job. The bulk is from four years to the capital. To tell you that from childhood, I have worked everywhere for myself without parents. I believe in honesty, I believe in people working hard, and it's possible. And this is if you were not in love of country, after what we went through, we'll be on it. I can do other things. I have carried my bread upon the water, that's denying enough. But we need to take that country for at least set the diet so that younger people can take over and follow that lead, that news that. You may try to leave on a year, but we need leadership by example that will show people that Liberia is not a country that a man, not a, is a country that it is good, good leadership. Send the agenda right and show people that corrupt people would not have a room in a society, yeah, and you said it with yourself. Actually, secondly, they will follow. The Liberia, people will begin to appreciate good things, and they will not want to go back either way. We are there to serve their agenda, that's no fair. Okay, my brother, my brother.
Yes, um, a question. If I support, I have to make what's done. If the, if the national head today, you know, you're making a decision based on the answer of your questions. But here's what I have to say. Um, I have trouble most of the seventeen candidates.
Listen, that is my turn, please, listen.
So during my soldier, I have been on soldier, one of the stories, education is very, very important, it's a crucial. Is the, is the most important cornerstone of foundation. I read some research for Liberia, for the foundation of Liberia, I found out that that cornerstone was missing. When the founders were laying the, the foundation of Liberia, they, that stone for, for education was missing. So as a military, it's what's happening in Liberia today. The mindset that I work in a society of high, it's great, not important. So if you take over, what would you do? There's this crucial problem. That's the question.
That is all. Uh, we, we didn't have said it, we are aware. Uh, everybody, that's what I said, the friends in you must make sure, and I said it before, no government official, that their children go to public schools. Because if you want to make it better, you have to empower. The quality of education, I, but all the countries that have made improvement is due through the quality of education. Out of all of here, people here, because people will pay for their child, go to university. None of our society to you are very rough. And I can tell you, it's not just the quality, but to make sure that most of our society can leave anybody out. And we have committed to that. Make sure that we re-institute quality education in our schools, starting with clean classrooms, giving the young people the desire to learn, other training teachers, paying them reasonably well, providing them some facilities, because even themselves, they want to learn to learn. Uh, it's funny, if somebody hires a young lady to sell tapole. And they see the UN vehicle, they put their UN H C R. They say UN H C R because they think UN H C R is a tapole. If you see a tapole with UN H C R in there, then that is American tapole. And now the general works, the general works. People, graduate college, they can, they can spare. One time I said it, that even our college graduates, not for looking down on them. But given an opportunity to brush them, one year, they get those title. And increase of their English by. And, and some just upgraded. Because when you get educated, you are competing with the rest of the world. No country is coming to invest in your country, no business, if you don't have educated people. Because if you bring all the people, they must meet well-trained people as well. If you don't have that, you don't have a country, so you are better. This link is gonna close, this link is gonna close immediately after him, closing this link, your question. I have told you over in the green, that, that country, people who people who are looted property, I'm not calling names, all of them are dispossessed. They have to account for what they have. And I think that, because you think, people who made that, that Liberia, I do it in my mind and go the same way. If we continue that, there will be no society. What can I show you? Justice will be done to our, to our people. We're closing this link after him, and then we'll move to this media practitioner who is really craving to ask a question. So you and the darling is closed.
We know the project in our company is dedicating our people. Uh, people who had acquired work just in less than three years, but serving in government. As the more gathered here tonight to support you to the presidency, we believe and welcome our second power president, uh, to let the city, if you do win in the United States, uh, director, uh, uh, office. We have the power or the strength, or the strength to penalize those that have acquired those rights illegally. Yeah, that's, clearly, our people in this country, we have a power to penalize, it's not just for, to spend their time somewhere nice.
You know, I know you're talking about ninety days because you are tired. You don't have to move on that. Whatever you do, make sure you want to live life, best ticket, substantiate. Make sure that you do it right. Because unlike people themselves who do that, if you really treat it, you'll say, young guy, say no. So don't put it to ninety days. We make sure, this is very, everybody sees, but you have to make sure you follow the procedures so that the record has been, and that what the person has acquired, leave. So ninety days is not a time, that will be according to pursue, because our people are here.
Okay, uh, the last question on the floor is from the, the, the gentleman. I have a gentleman that, that particular lines, folks. You, excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, look up on this side. Wait, ask your, ask your question, it's in the back room. Thank you.
My name is Natalia Saler, um, I report for Liberia. Then, as a woman, I'm twenty first in the county of Liberia. Uh, I have been struggling with the leadership house in, in Senegal. Uh, using one microphone, which is troubling for people around the world to really understand what is happening here. What are you going to do to help the media? Share them as soon as you can, you will hear what you are saying, because all of this. Care about us, now what? Then I'll invite you down, you ready? Second, they will have you today, that more, when we get to, after, to run more down, before you go to heaven. What are you going to do? Red down on the front of the memo.
Our right, integrity. And I can tell you, simply because the media, right among people who did and said, they need, they need refund. Because the way society is structured, everybody is scrambling for the same thing. The media is sad, large extent is compromised. And if we all have a fairer society, you who report first to that, who says to that, who because what you say, beyond a sacrifice, can cause problems for everybody. We need your help in here, that's fair, it's strategic. Media is on it, and not there to be the justice. So you that you have people, you need to help us too. Alright, so ladies and gentlemen, we want to thank all of you for your participation. Now, pay attention to the table. We will, we will allow our esteemed vice president to answer our question for the purposes of wanting to enjoy our jobs. But Dr. Simeon will send out the first question to the vice president, Dr. Simeon.
Okay, um, I believe this, Mr. Vice President, not to talk about this. As a college professor in this country, for me, human development is the most significant component of any type of development. Uh, we refer all the creatures around, regarding putting all of our energies in developing the young people. Our country fought a war that killed about ten percent of its population. Out of every ten million that walk, uh, out of every ten persons that were destroyed, that exist in the country, from year to year, there's one person was killed. All of us in this room have had somebody, either your uncle, your dad, your mom, or some kind of relatives that was killed as a result of the Liberian civil war. Mr. Vice President, you come from Lofa. Lofa is considered for two things in Liberia. The brains, we are, and the breakfast, we are. What will you do substantially when it comes to the human development development? One, two, we have, again, as a psychiatric, as speaking in Russia, we have a lot of young people who are hurting. We have a country that is traumatized. We have a nation that does not respect this in me, one for you. Thank you.
Quite right, what we did, if some of them who are not believing that, who are going to take these young people deep trauma, that, that, that is wrong, I think personally. I have a belief that we have seen that opportunity to take those young people over to be this a year, that I, that we, that's a, that's a time, that's a time. I can show you, I can show you, just to see those young people, just to see those young people, we, we are young people, we are young people, what? Not a good thing, not a good thing, that I have to provide, that I have to provide. I have a young man, I have a young man, and I'm watching, I'm watching, I'm watching. I've taken you, I've taken you, I have, I have, for doing the answering, answering. A young president that I recognize, they like, they like, they like, they like. That people are aware of him. We have, have, that's, 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 that's. They are eager for the young people, they want to let their, 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 that of a company, company, company. Look at Peter, we are, I have a reason because we are trying, we are trying to, we are trying to, we are trying to, we are trying to find how it's intended. Can't tell you the truth, it's true that it happens, it's finally, it's a difficult problem. All of these, what they give attention, because there are people who are up the tree, starting, you know, they want to, they want to. If we do not manage and leave best in our young people, what will happen? I promise you, this is a period, and this is why I should be there when you resign in the way is where. Work is instead of a loan. Many, many areas that they're looking for, so that my young people. They are capable, that is unique, and I promise you, they, they, on the way, I dare without, because it's definitely.
Okay, some of the last question.
Thank you, uh, thank you, although it's a sense of concern, but I think for taking me to, I took a lot of Lofa in two thousand and eighteen when we went around the city. Sixty nine, thirty six, especially in love, and thanks for the invite, I to follow you down this day. Sure, I don't know, I don't care, maybe you got the same thing. And it's an honor to be with you in this, in this public, for us. Uh, for those of you who don't know, I go by deep of what we did. I'm one of your highlights. Evan Costa is our, is our, is our general. Obey here is another general for us. We have, uh, everyone who has this question about a designer coming and respecting women, so there are a ton of for you. And man, you are something is one of them. We are many. My question to you, although it's a sense of concern, is you have used the word already, so have they done? I want to say, what if you could say to us, to those of us here, and then the lawyers outside this mall tonight? That you would not see us like Nigeria has done to this?
How, what did the Bible say about their food? He said, no, that's not. And we, we have worked, we have served the public, and we have been done. You can serve the public, can work in institutions, keep yourself in a meeting with the rules of the society, especially for those that have. What can you do, although I have proven that you can work, serve government. And not see the government, take government property and fuck. As a personal business. So we are, uh, doesn't matter, it's unfortunate. I can tell you, the examples that we set, like where people would know that we mean this, and we have said it before. And I promise you that we are going to make sure that my grand society, some of you are in the dashboard. Well, then have the opportunity to go by and be part of Liberia. I promise to do that. All that I promise you to do is make sure that Nigerian, so we respect them, but in a good country, that's not a kiss.
Alright, so I believe that we are doing a critical judgment here, and people was called vice president. So I wanted to tell us something important, that is the obvious one. What is a leadership style and what three things in this room from here going forward, even if you were elected president? What are the things that we want our people to go for?
To know me that I love my country very much. And I tell you, even the breath of water, I say, I wish I were in Liberia. And to show the Nigerian people that we have a beautiful country, and we all commit ourselves to working for that country, we have the best of people. And that will be that leader, that example that will set the pace, the basis for our country. I promise you that, I'm committed to it. Wherever I want, that's what I, I don't have any secret, I mean, in any office, the day I leave, I leave. Because the better your country, the better your people, the better they serve God, the better they may show themselves to the world. And that kind of country, I want to want to, for our people, like that people are powerful. We want to show them that our country is seen, the representation, so that they can walk in our place there. So that when they carry a gun behind them, they know that they're going to your home, and I promise you that.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, for one more time, let's give it up to the vice president. They're like getting out to a wonderful audience. And I'm very thankful that because we have been good sports, we have the opportunity for photo op with the VIP. We just stand in line, and we can come and take your, your picture, group picture, and the rest of it, okay? But before that, we will call on the vice president to just close us with a remark, then from there, we call on Mr. Costa, who will give photo op.
Let me say to you, by doing, no matter where you live, no matter what you do, oh, it's worth it. I want for all of us to commit ourselves to hear and. If you are from Lofa, I want to say because they would have some boy in home, so that he going to Monroevan, he going to the roads. And go to the river, and that's what I'm here for. We want to say yet, uh, this is our, I want to appeal to you. We have too much trouble back home already, let's work together. Position by just position, you serve your time indeed. And in leadership, like I told my chairman yesterday in the car, I said, leadership must have that. As a hunter who used a hard dog, and up country hunting dog, uh, he should stand. Uh, he knew among his dog that was one more stuck on him, he won't lie. So to block people, he knew whatever he did, that dog can lie. So when you walk under him, you say, all are you, and you stand. You got to understand that it's your work, some of them, we have work, we, 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 and some of the people. But if we believe to just cheer ourselves, oh, the nation not to learn. I want to appeal to you, wherever you are, the same way you live, in your organization, do that. Let leadership come and go on the day that there's a performance. And I want to thank you, I'm very proud of you, and you have acquired property now, and that's because there was a game. Continue to make our people, so go deep inside, people to agree with you. Correct people in a very admirable way. Obey the rules, work together for the better of our country. Thank you very much for the way you do, thank you out of you, for your people. You were called here by the pastor for the hardware, one for men, and we thank them. And I'm sure we could, of course, no sign of anything was there, but we are proud of them. We are making it better for ourselves, I want to thank them.
Yeah, I want to thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we want to use this time to, uh, on behalf of the office of former vice president, to thank all of you. I want to thank the, uh, national leadership of U P, U S, and Canada, with the capo guy and his core officer. We also want to thank U P leadership here in Minnesota, who was the chief officer, Lord, who do you know, to make this program with success. Special recognition to Mrs. Tupa, we understand she's a very special girl, she is very, in getting us here, we want to thank her, we want to thank Professor Tupa also. We want to thank our moderator, my two group friends, uh, who come and hide themselves in America, but we, we care them back and going. Make sure we take them back to Liberia. All of our friends who are here, Convent San, San Luis is also here, also have served the office of former vice president, we want to recognize them and thank you for your service. So thank you to all of you, the time is short, we'll be here tomorrow for Arizona, but such that when we come back into the U S, Minnesota will be our stop. Thank you, bro, thank you, and let's go, great work, thank you.
One last thing, uh, we'll go on the point now, so first off, in prayer. I will go on the. We will go, we will go on the point now, the first off, in prayer.
Can we be silent? Now, if I could, let us talk. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just want to glorify against power. We want to tell you, thank you so much for this occasion. Where are you in that, we tell you, take people to pray, as you're about to go through the road, we ask that you bless each, everyone of us. Bless our incoming president, Mister Joseph Dimabokka, and you were striking him for twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty three election vote. Father Jesus, we just gave you the twenty two, and so to you, may your needy praise and glorifying Jesus be with you.
So, Elijah, uh, for the game, I was the vice president. And, uh, one more, so it can be. We have to do this all day.
Excuse me. Elijah, sound, check your sound. Your sound is, 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 is low. Your sound is low. Probably you have to mute them from your end. Okay, we solved the problem already. So folks, we want to say thank you, uh, on behalf of the staff, management of this institution, we want to say thank you at this time. So we take down the music, as you listening to the former vice president, a couple of questions were posed to him, and he answered, he actually answered those questions. And the former vice president stood for three consecutive hours, three hours. So the debate about the health, about the former vice president, where is the debate? Let's turn now the CEO, what is your take on this town hall meetings, the one to one town hall meetings? The question and the answer will be from a vice president, Joseph Dimabokka, what is your take? Let's go.
So, yeah, thank you so much, um, I know during our previous, um, program, we did talk about a lot of stuff concerning the, um. Just another bear of the party, of reaching out, I think this is a new beginning, and it's coming for. They are probably coming for anybody who is interested, uh, the collaboration, together to do that twenty twenty three is successful. I think, uh, starting here with the town hall, I think it should not only be for the United States. There are a lot of, a lot of people by coming like me, that will want to listen to the vice president. Uh, currently, standard bear of the party. You remember the day when we, when it stopped true, and people were calling, remember they got called from Nigeria. Expresses affection as, you know, our citizens only lecture, the unity party have reached to them, and they have not been able to organize. They are partisan in Southeast. So I hope, hope that, um, the leadership of the party is taking a place, and I hope they have a lot of, a lot of activities. To ensure that the, uh, ambassador is able to reach out, to, especially the young people. Uh, there are a lot of, there are a lot of young people who have turned eighteen. There are some who returned in eighteen, yes, yeah, uh, who don't really have personal interaction with the vice president. So I guess a lot of people still is known, I guess we may be known by, by a lot of, the elderly people. I think there should be, um, an echo.
Let me check my. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so as I was saying, um, a lot of these young people don't know, you know, they need to have programs to enable the young people to get to know him. Because if you don't know him, it will become very difficult for them to make decisions, you know, that would, that would on him, on his side. They, they, they expect, you know, to inter eye to him, expect to, to ask him questions. For the time to continue in Liberia, especially not just Mursarada, but the rural areas, the counties, the districts. Uh, if possible, the, the towns, the villages, you know, reach out to the people and, and begin to sell your platform. What is it that you want to offer to the Liberian people?
Hello?
Different from.
Yeah, your echo is too much, I don't know. Uh, from my end, yeah, no echo, I don't know. Come back, join and come back. I'm, I'm, I'm clear, honor you, I don't know. Join, leave and come back. Okay, so folks, uh, this is today Liberia, I'm Elijah Esmosis, I'm here in Liberia. Uh, relaying this program here, unity party proven right in Minnesota, and I want to say thank you for the great job you, uh, for following us. Those of you that was joining us, want to say thank you for the hard job, thank you for the effort, thank you for the commitment, thank you for the effort that we, uh, that you continue to put in us. Thank you for the trust, and we hope and pray that we will continue to do this thing every day and night, and this is what we believe in, you know? Liberia is all we have, and, and we all, I, uh, love this country, we are not partisan of unity party, and this is an institution, that why we call it today Liberia. So we make sure we get opportunity to everybody, to make sure that you make use out of this, uh, this platform, so this platform is here for everyone. If you are here, you want to make use out of this platform, and want to say thank you. In Liberia now, it's late, it's just difficult for media institution like this to just give you an opportunity to, to continue broadcasting from folk like up to now, it's not an easy. But we are here, we are committed to do the job of the Liberian people, we're here to inform the Liberian people, the former vice president want to be president. Liberian people need to hear him, Liberian people need to know him, Liberian people need to know when he become president, what he going to do for the Liberian people, what he planning to do for the Liberian people? He fight against corruption, what he intend to do, those that are rooting our country, what he intend to do, Liberian people need to know, so that tomorrow, when he come to you for your vote, you judge him by the way he answering your question. So that is why we planning to do this, so thank you, CEO. So thank you CEO, welcome back, try again, let me see.
Okay, I'll take so much. So again, um, yeah, yeah. Is it okay now? Uh, let us know, the audio, the audio, oh, the sound is better now. So, uh, things that, that were raised and I mean a lot for the Liberian people and I mean a lot for the voters. So one of the question somebody raised was. What are you?
Your sound, your sound is, I don't know, your device, something is opening. Uh, something is open on your device.
Okay, let me, let me, let me go over you, continue.
All right, so, uh, he's facing a little bit problem with his device. So as we're saying, Unity Party is well organized in the state, but the problem is the Unity Party in Liberia. Will Unity Party continuing to maintain the integrity they have in the state? Will Unity Party continuing to work together? The town hall meeting, the town hall engagement is good. But since Unity Party lose power, how many time Unity Party went out of Mursarado to have the town hall discussion, to have people engage with the former vice president, Joseph Dimabouaka? Yes, having in the US, the team in the US, they are very, very strong, the, the strategy is very good. By giving their candidate, selling their candidate to the people, to the Liberian people, even though some of them, they will not vote, but they have their family members in Liberia. They can have the influence of their family members to vote for the candidate they want for them to vote for. But then, the Unity Party in Liberia, what are some of their engagement, what are some of their strategies? They the ones who will be having this town hall engagement, giving their candidate, selling their candidate, giving out, Kevin Joseph Baka out of the country, like in Lofa, Mursarado County, in Grand Cape Mon, Grand Gede, Maryland, all of those places, going out, organizing the town hall meeting, coming to the people, tell them, ask the people, what your expert for the former vice president to do for you people. It's not all way where LMD are organized or, or debate then, people go and answer question. But this is very good, this is a very good strategy. When the candidate go out to the people and unveil himself to the people, the people will be free to ask the question. At the end, it will be very good for the people. At the end, it will be good for the people that years in the day, the poor be able, the poor be open. The people will be able to answer their question and the poor be able to ask a very rightful question. You see some of the questions that were posted to the former vice president? Those question, they are very, very genuine, they are very, very good. And I actually admire those guy that ask some of the question, especially when they come to the corruption, those that are looting our country, moving out, you know? Some of the question, when they are reflect out to the, to the candidate tomorrow, when he come to power, he will definitely, but we don't want to bar pick in the back when someone or someone campaigning, they not tell you anything. Even they happen to win tomorrow, you are now hold them responsible. Try, let us see.
So, I, I hope we, we are okay now. I think so. And probably maybe, check the volume if you want to lower.
Go ahead.
All right, so, so there was one important question that somebody asked. And, and these questions actually resonate with the voters.
I don't know your echo, your echo, and the problem is not here, the problem should be over there. Because my own is okay, you are using the same echo, you must have your own echo on there. It may be your sound, your own should be on.
I'm, I'm, I don't think I have it.
Wow.
It's okay now, right?
Uh, let, talk, let me hear, talk.
It's better now, right?
Go ahead, let me.
Yeah, so, uh, there was, there was, one important question that somebody asked. And that question, I know, these are things that resonate with, with the voters. And that was about, that was about, um, the current. And, um.
You still having echo. You still having echo. You still having echo from your end there.
Oh, let me, let me.
You still having echo, you still having echo.
We must better.
Okay, so, uh, folks, please let us know, we trying to do something here, whether this will help us. And, yeah, talk, let go ahead. Go ahead, let me hear.
So, so, so again, um, the question was about those who are currently involved in, in corruption. And, uh, why is he gonna do? If he wins the election, is he gonna put some people in, is he gonna let them go? And the response was very, very good that, uh, whoever that is accused of corruption, or phone, stealing government, or public money. Uh, was surely better, and we.
Love? Yep, yep. Maybe your sister don't want you to talk tonight, so you stay here. Very, very, very bad, bad, bad echo. Yeah, so we just want to talk, maybe we reserve it for tomorrow, then tomorrow will come soon and try to discuss on it before we start on our program soon. I won't do that.
Yeah, so I'm.
Yeah, it echoes bad.
Is there speaker on over there?
Nothing on, everything is quiet, my own aside is okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay from my end.
But I'm sure, I don't, I don't have, I don't have.
Yeah, even the audience, uh, they say it's like you have something open, something should be opened. Uh, you should be opening, maybe the saw where you open it two time, it will give you echo. If you open it two time, the first one open you closely, it will be open the second one. The first one will be playing a bad one. So.
I did a close, close.
Then why you do off the whole digest and bring it back on, let's see.
Okay, okay.
All right. All right, so, uh, folks, as we're saying, you know, it's not about, this thing is not about money and it's not about, uh, who love you, who not love you. You know, we do this for everybody, we do this for, uh, CDC, we do this for ANC. ANC having their convention, definitely if you have chance, if, if, if you have invitation, we will definitely go and, yeah, we definitely go and provide courage for them because we want the Liberian people to know who is the rightful candidate. Liberian people should not just vote tomorrow and regret, that is what we don't want to do. Want the Liberian people to be informed, because even in school, if you don't know, if you not understand the lensing, how will you pass? If you don't know about your candidate, if you don't know about someone, how will you pass? How will you be able to know that person tomorrow, even they come to, 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 to win election? You don't buy.
Elijah? Sure, I, I think the sound should be okay now, right? If you hear me, let me know if the sound is okay, but, um, we're trying to see, uh, if this technical issue can be resolved as soon as possible. Um, you let us know, uh, you listener, let us know whether the sound is okay now. Um, so that we might continue with, uh, the conversation. Let us know if the sound is okay. If there's no, um, feedback anymore, no echo anymore, we can continue. Let us know if you are watching right now. So yes, okay, um, Elijah, um, Elijah will join us, um, uh, soon. Uh, let me continue, I know he control all the system on the other side. But, um, yeah, a lot of good things that were, um, raised today. Very important questions, very important concerns. And those concerns, uh, would definitely resonate, would definitely be some of the top topics or issues that voters will take into consideration when they enter into their boot or their voting boot. Uh, they will take into account corruption, they will take into account leadership. And this is why it's very important that, um, the CPP. And I know somebody have suggested that, you know, they should dissolve the CPP. Um, in as much as it could be a very good idea and a good suggestion, recommendation. But I think you should allow the democratic process to unfold, continue to unfold. Right now, if you do that, you know, during his regime, during his leadership, you know, it set up, you know, uh, um, some sort of, you know, bad records. You know, it can also be used politically against him. So I think, uh, most of the supporters and partisans of all the collaborative parties need to support, uh, JMB, support the leadership right now and see how they can resolve, uh, most of the issues when there are elections. There are elections, there are tensions. Whenever there are elections, there are tensions. And this is why our people need to understand, all right? Most of our people don't understand that there will be heated arguments, there will be counter arguments, there will be accusations, you know? There will be a lot talking about, you know, each party or each candidate who is involved in the elections. You know, your opposing, opposing candidate will always ensure we find out or we look for things dirt, you know, against you, look for things that, uh, will make you unpopular with the voters. So, uh, respect the process in as much as somebody on the other end, you know, playing games, whatever games they are playing, I think you have four political parties, four political parties. Each of these parties, we, we have delegates. And those delegates are going to be voting for someone who they see faith, they see experience, they see, uh, more relate, more related to the people, someone who relate to the people, someone who is close to the people, someone that the people know. So if you have the ALP and you have the Unity Party, you have the ANC, you have the Liberal Party, all right? Now, the ALP have given their support since the beginning to JMB. So assuming that we have ninety nine percent of their vote combined with the Unity Party vote and probably they may get some votes from the Liberal Party, that can cross them, you know, in fact can help them cross the line, you know, and win the ticket. So again, I think people should focus on, on, on working together, focus on, there will be a lot of, lot of challenges and I know a lot of people in Liberia, a lot of our people don't understand and they are not used to this system. You know, the democratic system that is unfolding within the CPP. And so somebody asked question about that and said, you know, why not leave? You know, so that, you know, because it's causing trouble, it's making things more complicated for you. That's true, it may be true, you know, it may not be true. But again, at this present time, it is not advisable. I would not advise, you know, JMB, I would not advise the, uh, uh, Vice President Baka to quit. And I would not advise him, you know, to suggest to other parties to quit. Because that will seem, uh, somehow, you know, uh, uh, difficult and not even difficult, but it, 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 it won't show that he has, um, a strong leadership skill, a strong leadership ability, you know, to, to, to reconcile people, to bring people together. So again, if you can bring a little group together, like the CPP, and then you're talking about the entire nation that is fractured, the entire nation that is divided, you know, divided on political lines, divided on tribal lines, divided on, on different ideology. So it is his responsibility now to remit in, in the, in the system, to remit with the CPP and to ensure that there is stability within the CPP, you know? Encourage all, you know, leaders to get, to get alone and to support the objective of the CPP, all right? I understand people are frustrated with all that, you know, coming out of CPP and so forth. But it, it, it does not really, it does not really, you know, take away the, the, the prospects of the CPP. So again, there will be challenges, any political party, any group of people, even in your, in some of your, you are supported in your homes, in other places, you know? You have a lot of stuff going on and you know, you know, this, this happens. So again, want to encourage you, the supporters, want to encourage many of you, you, you watch today presentation, you watch the town hall. And this town hall should not be, you know, the second or the last, you know? The, the party itself in, A, in Marovia, you know? The party itself in Marovia should be able, should begin to play now. In as much as the CPP is a group, but also you guys are individual political parties. So the Unity Party should begin to reach out, reach out to the rural communities, reach out to the districts, reach out to, to, to the towns. Organize yourself, is your presence being felt, you know, in Grand Gede, in Maryland, in, in, in Grand Cru, in Sano, you know? Forget about somebody saying, you know, that that's a stronghold of the ruling party. Um, granted, but there are a lot of votes that came from Sano County during the twenty seventeen elections for the former vice president. So Unity Parties, they have, uh, some stronghold in, in Sano County. And even those counties that you don't have stronghold, go there, reach out. Not everybody in there that support the ruling party, they are independent. They are independent thinkers over there. There are young people who are looking at the situation now in the country who see that they need a solution, they need a way out. But if you are not reaching out to them, they get frustrated and they, they tend making decisions that might not be right for, you know, for, for them, for the, for the country as a whole. So it is your responsibility, Unity Party, whoever the chairman is, uh those who are in uh the authority of the Unity Party, reach out, begin now. You don't have to sit, you don't have to, it's getting late for you, you know, you have no more time. You don't wait, you fight, you should decentralize your, your office, alright? Decentralize your office, ensure that you have sub offices in districts, you know? Go there into the district, organize the young people and speak the truth. You don't go and promise the people lies, make sure that you speak the truth and explain your platform to the young people. Draw out a, 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 a comparison between what you are presenting to them and what is unfolding currently. And also ensure that, look, how are you going to resolve these issues? Even if you, if you are being given, you know, the opportunity to solve, to solve, uh you, you know, uh, 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 uh suppression, you know, a J B seven suppression. You have to tell them, how are you gonna resolve those issues? It's not just about writing the issues on the paper. But I think that there should be a very vigorous team, a team that is fast sided, a team that is thinking faster, a team that is planning, a team that is, that knows the team that is, you know, organizing, analyzing issues. Yeah, and finding way. And this is why you're gonna tell people, alright, this is a secure situation. This is a situation with, with rules. This is how we intend, you know, paving the roads, modernizing our road. This is how we intend to modernize our public schools. This is how we intend, you know, paying the public teachers, where the, where the income. And, and I'm glad that the former Vice President, Vice President said tonight that there are, you know, there are more revenue being generated than what the government is reporting. If that is the case, then it means that, you know, the government can raise more money. And I think people tend to agree with that because there is a high level of corruption. And if there's a high level of corruption, then what he's saying might be true, alright? And if you think about it, it might be true. But how are you going to change that trajectory? How are you gonna change that situation? How are you gonna change, you know, government lying to people and you saying the truth? Okay, you wanna come and you wanna be president, you wanna take money, wanna run the country. How do you plan running the country, alright? So that's why you need to, you need to be speaking out to the people. Present your, your plans to the people, have the tallying over and over, over and over again. You can't sit down in Monro- Monro- Moser Road, you can't sit down in, 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 in Moser Road and say, well, J M B is well known, he's known with the old folks, but he's now well known with the young people, alright? The young people who have turned eighteen, nineteen, you know, since the elections, twenty seventeen elections, have not seen, have not felt his, his presence. So you need to engage, you know, engage the young people. And, and these are people that can make the decision. Majority of our young people have to be educated. And you will not go and say, there are two weeks to elections and begin to convince the young people. No, it's no time, you begin to educate them, what it means to, to cast your vote. Most of them don't even know, you know, why it means to cast your vote. Because some of them sell the votes, some of them being bribed to, to, to go and vote for, for, for five hundred or say for some, for some food or say for some, for some promises of scholarship or other thing. It should not be the, the um, the, 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 the essence of you casting a vote. No, you should cast your votes consciously, meaning that, think, look at the party and the young people too, right now, begin to study the individuals that want to run, that want to become president. Look at their platform, look at their character, look at what they have done before and start following, you know, money. Money is not gonna resolve the issue. In fact, the money they are giving you is the money that could be used to pay for rules. What they are using to pay, to give you, to go and cast vote. And, and, and you know why? The very same people that you wanna, you wanna take that money from and go cast vote for them. These are people that will come and steal and steal and triple and triple and triple and steal so much from the country and why are you not benefiting? And they take penal money when elections are coming, they take penal money and give you penal money and say, look, go ahead, vote for me. And you go in the sun, you go in the rain and the rain beat you, everything. You go there and you, you go to cast your vote. Base your vote on something tangible, something realistic. Base your vote on, 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 on modernized education. Base your vote on the future of your children, base your vote on, on, on good health, health facility. How many ambulances do we have in, 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 in our counties? In fact, nurses, health professionals have to demonstrate before their AP. So I mean, so begin, Unity Party, you got a lot, and other political party who wanna do a lot. You got a lot to do now. You need to stop sitting in Monrovia and every day talking about Joshua. Joshua, he's, he's, he's traveling one country to another, is that gonna resolve the problem for you? No, you must engage the people, you have to go out there and engage the people. You have to talk to the people one-on-one, you gotta talk to the people one-on-one. Collect a data of your membership, how many members do you have as a Unity Party? How many members do you have in Member County? How many numbers, how many members do you have that you have records of? How many members do you have? Do you have their phone numbers, contact numbers? Have you reached out to them? How many times have you sent messages to them? You know, how many, how many members you intend to add up to in Member County? Alright, you sit in Monrovia or everybody keep talking when Joshua, the president gets into the plane, driving somewhere, everybody talking about it. It's not gonna help the people by there, you need to go back there and reorganize yourself. Go out there, reorganize your bases, make sure you have at least in every county, at least in every district, you know, in every major quarters. Make sure you have some, you have your presence being felt, you know? Build, build some, 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 some institution over there. Don't take the party as just like a party for today, you know? Most of the political parties in Liberia, they, they rely and they sit and they rely on the, on the, on the standard bearer. Alright, he provides everything for the party. When the standard bearer no longer exists, what becomes of the party? So even the Unity Party should not be, should not be relying on Jose Yuma Mbaka, okay? Go back to your member and begin to encourage them. There are, there are people that can give, you know, how many, but do, are you in touch with your members? You know, have you, have you, have you shared with them your platform? Have you shared with them to say, well, support my platform, this is my platform, support the work I'm doing? Have you done that so that they can give support, you give money to help the party? Even if one Unity Party member will pay five dollars, Liberian dollars on the monthly basis, alright? That's a lot of money, but how do you intend to, if you manage that money, alright? Does, does the, does the party have a, a, a centralized, you know, a, a, a transparent, you know, uh way to spend money, you know? Do you have an account, do you have an account for the party and not for individual? And so most of you now are relying on the former president, President Eli Johnson Salih. And I bet you, I bet you, 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 Unity Party members, if you think Eli Johnson Salih is going to help Jose Yuma Mbaka become president, zero, is zero, take it today or you leave it. She is not going to do it. She, she will laugh, she will come, she'll play games. She's not gonna spend her money for the Unity Party. In fact, Unity Party is not a party. Do you know that Eli Johnson Salih came from the, you know, the Action Party, Liberal Action Party? So stop wasting your time, she used the Unity Party to, to, to get to power. So you think she's gonna support the Unity Party? Sit over there and then go back to your members, go by, recruit more people. Recruit more people, go back to the community and begin to discuss with your people. Recruit more people so that you can get more, you can get support from the people themselves. So the people that begin to give support to the party that they have, they are right. They can say whatever they want to say about how the party should run. So the party should not be on an individual, Jose Yuma Mbaka does not even have money to run the party, alright? And you have a lot of Unity Party members that you can reach out to. So who are the leaders in the party? You guys are only there setting the weight and go, stop begging Eli Johnson Salih. In fact, I stole the money. That money is supposed to be prosecuted for all the things that she and her chair have done. And so the party wanna go back to and begin to, to beg for money that belongs to the Liberian people? Now you party that you wanna, you wanna say, you wanna, you, 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 you wanna deal with corruption? So you better go now and begin to talk to the Unity Party members. Since twenty seventeen elections, alright? What, what's the chairman, what you guys are doing? Organize program, keep the members, keep the members, you know, to active, proactive. But you're not doing that, okay, you're not doing that. Okay, so again, Unity Party, you gotta strengthen. Yeah, you understand, we gotta strengthen, get back to the people, get back to the work, get back to the job. So that tomorrow, even now, you're talking, you're not even thinking about twenty years, fifty years or not about the Unity Party. If Jose Mbaka wins twenty twenty-three and he, you think he wins, then he's, you take government money and give it to the party, is that why you guys thinking about to build, to build the party up? No, 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 alright? So the support of the party comes from the partisans. Begin to educate the people, begin to tell them, don't teach them always. You, that, that's how you'll get your leaders in, in the, in corruption. Because you're depending on them to take money and bring it to the party so you can back up. It's the same thing that happening today with the Liberty Party. The Liberty Party is not depending on a criminal, alright? They steal government money, he has issue with FIFA and he passing all around and he says supporting the Unity Party. And then you, you are the very same person, you are this very same person that's, that talking about, you know, you're speaking against, you know, corruption. Corruption under your bed, so you better start doing something. Unity Party, you have the opportunity, get the right people doing the job. Take the party out of Monrovia. Take the party out of Monrovia. Alright, take the party out of Monrovia. Take the party out of Monrovia. Take the party to Grand Gede, alright? Have some mini convention, it doesn't matter how many person gonna come, that should not even be a worry, alright? Put every strategy in place, put everything in place. Strategize, plan well, you know, reach out to the community. Who told you, there are a lot of people in Grand Gede, there are a lot of people in Grand Gede that are not cetaceans, that are not, that, that have no. Excuse me, they have not planned to be part of CDC. Now you have listened to your standard bearer, you have listened to your political leader. He doing his part, but all of you have a lot to do. If you don't do it, I'm sorry for you. All the kids he's making here and there, we, we just made a thing because it is not gonna help. So no political party should be relying on the standard bearer to provide for the party. No, it should be the people themselves. It should be the people themselves, it should be the people themselves. And how do you do it? Get the right people in place. And for just sitting in Monrovia and talking a lot, going on attaisha and discussing, you know? Get back to the people themselves, you know? After the elections, did you go back to them, alright? Okay, you had another election again, alright? You, 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 you had the, uh, 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 the legislative elections. You, you, you won, you won a lot of seats, alright? But you need to get the people, get up, get, get running on, get, get on the ground, get running. Don't sit back there, you think they're gonna be all, all, all okay with you, alright? So there are some, some things the ambassador talked about, talked about, you know, qualified people, you know? If you win elections, all of that is based on a condition, you must first win election. But how are you going to win elections when you don't have money? What are you gonna do? You think the people go back to all Unity Party people? Let them know, look, we need money, we have to run our party, your party depend on you. And start the fundraiser, start it with yourself, alright, start it with yourself, okay? Start it from district to district, district to district. Look for an example, when, and some of, some of, some of guy's situation, he wanted money. What did he do? He went back to his people. And all, most of the people who were giving, uh, still giving are Unity Party people, Liberty Party and the coalition. But use the same methods, the same method he used, uses the same method, try, go back to the district, alright? Uh first, bring the people together and, and tell them, this is what we intend doing. This is why we want to win this election. You think just sitting in Monrovia be talking about winning election, you gonna win elections, alright? When the people, the level of understanding, it will take a longer time for the people to realize what you are telling them is true and to make a right decision. And that information needs to be in their ear every time, constantly. And you sitting in Monrovia and say, well, you know, you're doing well. What message are you sending back to Grand Gede? You listened to the caller the other time. What message are you sending over there in Maryland, in, in Hable, in Riversdale? What constant message are you sending to them? Are you reaching out to them? Do you have an outreach to the people? You have an outreach to the people? And then you guys said, you, you, you said, and, and, no, it's not time of city, it's not time of putting on the coat, coat suit and whatsoever, tacking your belt, you know, the former president. President Tena said, you know, there were tough times, you like you had a time. And then he said, tacking your belt, you know, even though your belt is, 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 you wore your belt, whatever. But he said, you need to tighten your belt. Unity Party hurricane, you know, the, the leadership of the Unity Party, tacking your belt, you know, roll your sleeves. If you have to wear the boots to wear, get into the forest, get the people into the forest. Because these are people that are gonna vote. Don't wait when it's two weeks to elections, you only have a year and a half. That is not even sufficient for you to reach out with your message and you will see more time. You waiting for money to come until you start doing something, alright? What, what is it that you have in your budget, start doing something now. And it's not about Moser Road, go back to Grand Basel, alright? Go back to Grand Basel, there is a segment in Grand Basel, alright? That, that does not belong to any political party. These are independent thing, Liberal now have independent voters, they, they are there. They don't belong to any political party. What is the agenda that you sharing with them? That, that bring change, that bring different, the difference, you know, in their life. That's how people do it in the Washington War. You have to go and share, you have to compete, go to the people and tell them, this is what I intend doing. To make your life better, your children's life better, your school. To make your life better, your children's life better, your school system better. And tell them how you gonna do it. And then just sit back and say, well, yeah, the the current government is stealing. So why are you gonna do it then? Or you just sit down and go on radio station and say, the government is stealing, the government is stealing, who doesn't know that? I mean, let a Librarian know that the government is stealing, they are they are public money. How do you want to change that situation? Instead by just going on the air and government is stealing, government is stealing. You have bulk of the population in the counties. Who are not even informed, who are not educated. Alright, who are not given the right information, you got young student, young children. Alright, young people who graduated from 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 the counties, the the high schools in these counties. They don't have their way out. Go and recruit them, go and recruit more members there. Alright, so J M B is in in the United States. He tried to re- energize, you know, and and revolved the 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 party here. Alright, he also speaking as the chair of the CPP. Alright, but what are you doing? Alright, what are you doing? J J M B is not only the person in the party. He's not gonna do all. It takes all of you to do that. So you you begin to do that. I like the way the women, the women wait, started doing some organi- organizing and other stuff. But it's not just about here, you gotta go over there. You gotta go over there. The high schools are open, alright, what is the United Party doing? Students were in the Italy, you don't have tuition or, okay, even if you don't have money to pay your school fees. But can you care some some school materials? Alright, can you care some 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 copybooks, some pencils? Alright, and give to the students. Alright, and give to the students in no counties. You you waiting, wait, Ali Joseph said he will give you money, uh she will give, if you don't know that. She's not a help to the United Party, you start wasting your time. You know, I I heard it, I heard J M B talking about, you know, he 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 went to the birthday, you know, uh it was on BBs. That's good, maintain that relationship. Political relationship with Ali would just damage you. Alright, political relationship with Ali, Mr. Baka, political relationship with Ali. It's a waste of time. If Ali was courageous, courageous to support our president who we have today, you think she would, that was your touch. The war that that is fighting now, alright, it is good against evil. All about this election you're talking about, J M B, all the election you're talking about today is good and evil. What is the good? The good is, there is somebody who wants to run and win elections and persecute people who have, who have been suffering Liberia. And bring about economic and war crime code in the country. There are people who work in government from the president level down to ministers. Stole the Liberian people money. I think you go tell Ali to give you money to support your campaign, you gonna do it? Mr. Baka, start wasting your time. That woman ain't gonna support you. Love for the good people, you know, in the diaspora, love for the good people in Liberia. Love for the good people all over the world that will help support your campaign. You should start wasting your time, United Party, it's a waste of time. Ali Joseph Salim is not, Ali Joseph Salim feels that she's she's some kind of hell for Liberia. Alright, the only person she will not be able to destroy that country is Joseph Yumabaka. But every other politician, now a potential, potential politician. Besides some of the one that, you know, that coming up now. And I remember this man, Vadi Shaba, Vadi Shaba was a kind of good member, he massive. Until where Ali, he Ali finished with him, there were he, why Vadi Shaba today? Even though he's in the Senate, he don't, he he is voice, he doesn't have any integrity level integrity anymore. He can't say anything, you know, that people respect in Liberia. He stole for the trouble later on, he slept, and follow Ali there with he, what happened today? Alright, you think Joseph Yumabaka, Ali, Ali having have not been able to get you into that corruption issues. So she not gonna put any support, you gotta remember, that's that's obvious, that's that's obvious. She's not gonna support you, she will laugh with you, she will think, you will think that she's, but you was anyway. You're you're better wisdom, I don't need to tell you. You are better wisdom. So, remember, you know, United Party is not, is not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen today, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, no way, she not gonna do it. Under no condition, she would not do, because she know, you know, and I don't care what she do. Whatever she does, she's not god over Liberia. That's the thing she should understand. She came, she started doing well, I must admit that. She started doing well. Reforms and other thing, the first term, she started doing pretty much well. The second term, she used that to exploit the country. And she want to control the country now. I don't think so, we're gonna continue with that. Joseph Baka, you know, man, you know, you, that woman is not your interest. And let me tell you, I think that's one of the issue. You got halfway, with P, I don't know, there are other issues. But I think he was one of the individual that didn't want to follow most of Ali Joseph Salim instructions. So many a relationship, but politically, don't get her involved into anything. And you yourself have to be very careful, very, very careful, oh man. Know know where you go, know know why you eat, where you eat. You know, don't go to Ali and start eating all kind of cake and stuff, man. This is a political game, man. Understand that, oh man, know that, alright, know that. Understand that you can visit her, you know, visit her, do what you can do. But the po- the party itself, the party should be based to surround the people, the people. You 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 gotta put that into the minds of the people. You gotta teach the 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 members, you gotta teach the United Party members. It's a good party, Liberty Party also is a another good party, but they messing up again too. You know, when they corrupt, corruption and corrupt me, alright, is that how I wanna help our country? Is that how I wanna go forward, you know, and all of the games they play just because of you. And know fully where that Ali Joseph Salim know, that the people know you. The people want you, the people like you, that she cannot do anything with it. The only thing she can do is to get into other parties and other things and manipulate. So that you can proceed going forward, even to run for elections. Don't waste your time, you should not waste your time, you should not, you have respect her. Or we respect her as a former leader, I have high regard for. And we must respect her, and thank God that we have a former leader, and that's good. Alright, that she's living, we have former leader that she's living. But if I read me that, she does not support the United Party because Joseph Yumabaka is dead. And oh man, I'm not telling you lie, I'm telling you the truth. She's not gonna support you. And even if she gave any money, I don't think the United Party should take money for Ali Joseph Salim. To run the party. If if you guys are are, if if you guys men, if if you guys are really serious to fight corruption and to persecute people who are taking away the the future of the young people. Lot of children, children that should have better education. Today, there is no no opportunities. Better education, better opportunity to travel other country, to travel other places. To have teachers being paid on time and and giving them benefits. Lot of the healthcare, you know, centers that that were that were built by the international uh uh organization. All now in Rome, all in forest, most of them are damaged today. Because they are no longer being able to maintain them. So those who were going there for healthcare, they no longer being provided that healthcare services. And they are think, Ali Joseph Salim will come and support you people, you better think better, you better think better. You have respect her, I'm not saying disrespect her, no, 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 respect her. She's she's, she was our former president, and we respect her for that. But she damaged the country her second term, and she think she can, she can continue, see what she did. Now what happened into the country? So the game, man, the game, okay? Uh, Mr. Baka, continue, get the right people, you know, Liberia for all of us. We wanna help, wanna help our country, not just about talking. In many ways wanna help, in government, other private sector wanna help. But even if you wanna open little business in Liberia, alright? The very same Liberian people, the very same people, we have to change our mentality as well. We are, we are our own problem too. We are our own problem, alright? Petty jealousy, hatred, you know, people are no longer patient, people are no longer doing hard work, they want quick money. Alright, see how the drugs is damaging the the young people in Liberia. The security sector is 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 so go poor. Alright, people bring in drugs from different, different country, and the young people are suffering. You know, they they should have the right, the opportunity that other young people have, to go to school, to become somebody. You know, to either become a public servant, to either be serving in a private sector. There are many doctors, many, many teachers today i- i- on Center Street. Who 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 brains have been damaged with drugs. That's one of the thing, personally, that's one of the thing, I don't know, how many person ask question about that. But that's one of the war you had to fight, war against drugs, addiction. And those who are bringing drugs in Liberia, should go to jail if a lifetime, they should go to jail for lifetime, lifetime. And ensure that whoever that is the head of that agency is doing their job. If they are not doing their job, you fire them. And if they have to be, you persecute them, they be persecuted. Alright, other people, children are learning, while the young people, time is passing by, and somebody is giving them drugs. What kind of country is that? Alright, just, we can't have peace in our own country, you can't travel to your country and go sit for some time. You go, you gotta be, you 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 worried who coming on you uh overnight. What kind of country? How we find ourselves in? This country has to be safe. You have to be safe, through the grace of God. But United Party is a good thing. Uh, town hall meetings are good, let the standard bearer focus on the town hall meetings. And many other programs you can design. You know, their battle school program is another good one for you guys. But whether you're taking advantage of it, you are waiting for the, for the, for the uh political leader to to travel back. And and see why you can do, no, you know how to wait, you know, you gotta do something. Then let the party be proactive. You know, we hope that the Liberty Party can get over this kind of situation. And and let me, let me say this for uh another time again. Mister Cummings, you are very fine man. You work into this system that all of us work in, you are very good man, a very fine man. If you are a leader, some of the decisions in previous time, in recent time that you took were wrong decision. By making your way at all cost at the Liberty Party headquarters. Without the approval, the approval, I said the approval, I'm not saying without the approval of their political leader. Is is i- is a, is is a disrespect to another political leader. You would not be, as, you not be a political leader for ANC and you're chairman of the party. Take decisions that you are, you don't approve. That's a disrespect. I think you owe Yomlee an apology, whether in public or in private, you need to do something about it. And your relationship with Musa Billy, you talking about fighting corruption, you wanna be a leader who fight corruption. And you are with somebody who 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 everybody know, almost everybody know in Liberia, is very corrupt. Your relationship with him, are you thinking it will help you? It's not gonna help you, Mister, Mister Cummings, that's a wrong decision. Whoever that advise you, giving you that advice, there's a political advice to give you. A political advice, you have resources, wonderful resources that you would have used. And take your program to a very good place and have it, you know, with all the kind of entitlements. Uh, integrate yourself. You can go to Yomlee, if you want support from Yomlee, you can go to Yomlee, a- and you you at the top, you guys are the top, you, all of you guys are political leaders. If you disrespect it, I do not press it like that, and you think it'll give you support? Come on, man. Yeah, I mean, you know better, man, you know better, Mister Cummings, you know better, you know, you know better. Your relationship with Musa Billy is not gonna help you, man. You 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 a team, I mean, your character be tainted or be tarnished. If I is not, your character is not tarnished. How can you go launch, you know, a loan for a woman, woman wait in another political party? The political leader is not even there, you yourself, what what logic does that make? What sense does that make? I thought you were a leader who went to United people, bring people together because you want to be president. You messing up too much, man, Mister Cummings. Mister Cummings, you know better, man, messing up too much, messing up too much. Can anybody organize, your chairman will organize uh in N L D wing, political wing in your party, they be a U V. Who who gave the approval for all this system, go ahead. And the leader is telling you, I don't know about it, so why don't you believe what she said? And say, look, you know what, I think there's a problem, we don't wanna make more problems for the people, you know, because come to United. Now you you you, come on, man, come on, Mister Cummings. You getting, you getting yourself into too many things. But again, man. Uh, just like my Baka has, uh, that was the second town hall meeting. And a few things that he talked about, I think this were things that, uh. And a few things that he talked about, I think this were things that, uh, a few questions they asked. What are the three things that, you know, Lebrun push you remember you about? Uh, he talk about love. You have to have love for your country, which is very essential, which is very important. If you don't love your country, man, you can't even see so much for your country, you don't care. But if you love your country, you love your people. He wants, you wanna see people, you know, being lived, lived out of poverty, he wants to see people, you know, living, you know, living a better life. That's how it's supposed to be, you know? That children will have, you know, will no longer be waiting for in the rain, you know, to get in taxi or to get. So you have, you have bosses, school bosses, public school. You have public school bosses run, you know, so that children go to school. Without head, they go to school, they got something to eat. When they go to school, they got lunch, they got other things to eat. But he has to take all of us efforts, but it should have to start with the leadership. And so you, you don't sit back there again, oh, we'll continue be talking, once, we'll be talking about elections. Why it be, why election means to you as a Liberian? Well, why it means to you, election, we'll be talking about businesses, uh, you know, as we've been talking about. Managing the public sector, we're gonna continue with our, with our program. And we look forward to all of you listening. But again, we just wanna, you know, add up a little word to, to Unity Party, stop sleeping. You need to wake up, man. Ain't gonna be no easy ride, ain't gonna be no easy task. Trying to, to go against the incumbent. You know, they got all the money to get go use, but that's one of the thing you need to start educating people now, alright? People wait in the, in the, in the forest, go there, walk to them. If you have, if you have to walk to their farms, go on their farms. Today, walk with them, that's, that's, that's what it called leadership. Because you're selling your, you're selling your ideas to them. If you have to go and be to the farm, on the farm with them for a day, go there, be there on the farm for a day. And, you know, see what they're going through. Feel what they, what they, what they are going through. Some of the farmers, they don't have no equipment, they got nothing to work with. Go see what they're doing struggling just to make ends meet. Then that kind of person you talk about in lecture, they will remember and say, I think, this man have come here, explain something to us, we'll take it seriously. Go sit in Marogha and think, you, 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 you gonna go after two days, you do this election, and you think you're gonna win the people over? Ain't gonna work that way. They keep to go down to the people, you know, go to the deeper part of the, of the, of the, of the country. Alright, go there, uh, you know, recruit people and they go and recruit other people. You know, get a dinner base of all your members, phone numbers. Share the information with them, alright? And those who you are recruiting, those who are going to recruit other people. And this should be consistent, is that because of twenty twenty-three elections? But it should be part of the party agenda, it should be part of the party, you know, policy. Just, you know, and, and after party, the energy level, the party, you know, should go. Because she, she selfish, she got what she wanted, and you know, and you are said bye. So reach out to the people, to the farmers, reach out to those noises, you know, go see what they're going through. Alright, go to the counties, go to the district, go there, go in the hospital, visit them. Alright, talk to them, it's not about money, go and talk to them. How can you change this country? Somebody they don't know, that, what, which decision to take, they don't know. You sit back in Marogha every time you're having, you know, uh, 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 forget about all, um, uh, attack shop. They have posed enough, those people back there, they having or anything, but, but carry the information to them. They want more information. Carry the information to them. Alright, so if I don't see you in their county, in their district, maybe there's a village over there that have, uh, one clinic. One nurse or maid wife who is in there. And you know they are near, what do, what is it that they want? You may not provide all. Maybe they need something like little generator, you know, to pull it all. Uh, if, 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 if somebody come for, for delivery, you know, they can put the light on and help them. Or tell you know, you can have a responsible government. That's how be given to the people. Go to the schools in, 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 in the counties. Recruit some of the young people, you guy Maro are talking too much. Take them to the counties, at least on the monthly basis or quarterly basis. Alright, let her go and provide lectures. Alright, some of the university students, organize them. You gotta look what kind of universities to them, you gotta graduate kind of universities, some of that will be more political. But I wonder, I agree with you, organize them, go to graduate, some of the high schools in graduate. Go and offer some services to them. Go and offer some services, so come to, to teach. More early, you, your secretary, you know, you know about all those stuff, you from the University of Liberia. Alright, try organize some of those guys, go out, reach out to, to the counties. Each one teach one or each one bring one. Each one bring one, go to the counties. There are many ways you can offer, you can offer assistance to the people. The charity, uh, sound, sound teaching. Organize some of the, uh, teachers, 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 uh, workshop. How much it gonna take you to organize teacher workshop? And help at least to, to update the teachers, give them some new information. GMB has a foundation, how active is the foundation? Who are doing running the foundation? What are they doing? You think it's the money the people want, they don't want money from you. Your presence and feeling, what they feel is, 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 is very important for them. That's what they want, that's what they wanna see, alright? Go to Maryland, go to, go to River City. Alright, you got a lot of bridges in River City, people use kid or other thing. Can you get some, uh, speed boat or something? You know, just to transport people from one place to another, you know, the party can buy a speedboat or something and, and donate to the people. No feature, uh, feature, uh, featurement or no guys who are over there. Provide, do something. Motorcycle, you said motorcycles are all industries, what are you doing? Organize workshop, bring them there, help them, they teach them rules, how to follow, you know, uh, 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 city audiences. Build, 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 go ahead, build some, some, some stuff for them. You know, build some bus, uh, uh, places, shelter for them. So that when it's rainy or socially, they can pack their, their motorcycle somewhere, so that they're not be in the sun. There's some people run behind you to vote for you, alright? They come by, the same children are studying this song, looking for their daily bread, some of their students. But they had to run there before they do other thing, they don't have no shelter, don't have nothing, alright? Rain, rainy season time, get some rain boat, give it to them, that's a help. It's not just about talking, I'll be talking, 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 talking. And I hope the Unity Party, you know, Harry Keo, whoever, uh, people are listening to this. I hope even, uh, the old man himself listening, alright? If you don't do that, all these things you are doing, it's gonna hurt you. If you don't reach out to the real people, the real people, the people who feel, who feel the pain. If you don't reach out to them, and you, you know the party, how many times you reach out, you know, people who are affected. Alright, houses got burnt, you know, fire cut off houses. You, you, you wait to show how you can, you care some do- donation to the people. Give them something that you feel that they, they're part of you. You waiting for, you, you just say you want back end to go there and do it, he will do everything. Is he gonna do everything? We call response. A responsible government, that's how it start to show initiative. If the government is not responsive to the need of the people, you begin to do it. You don't have the money though, but the later you have, go ahead and, and, and tell them. You know, oh, we, we are sorry, you know, this thing happened, you know, disaster. You, you give them something, maybe, uh, uh, clothing or other things. Then they will take you serious, they will take you serious, yes, they will take you serious. So again, uh, I know my host is out now and then, uh, wanna say thank you. Uh, some of you have to go to bed, some of you had to go to work. And some of you are sleeping, I know, when you wake up, you can listen to this broadcast. This is today, Liberia Television. We wanna say thank you to all of you who been following the, uh, the program. And today Liberia is independent. We don't, with all of the conversation, I could talk for the ANC, I could even talk about the, uh, you know, about CDC. No, it, it just pay some money, this is an independent, you know, media institution. We're not biased, we don't wanna be, uh, wanna be objective as much as we can. So if it is ANC when they invite us, I know Cummings were here, but I don't think he, he told that we could cover his activities, you know, and other, you know, even Castle. You know, so let us know, find us, if you need us, you know? So it's not about just talking about this and that, but I wanna end with this. And this is something I'll keep saying all the again, I wanna end with this, thank you so much. Ellie Joseph Saliv, our former president, former president of Liberia. Ellie Joseph Saliv is not in the interest of the Unity Party. Believe me, whether you accept or not, it's up to you. Today, tomorrow, forever. Ellie will not support Joseph Yuma Bakai. Even if you grab in public and say, you know, uh, uh, back of me, back on. Ellie Joseph Sally is not going to support Joseph Yuma Bakai. Oh man, know that, I know you are better wisdom, know that, okay? Two, Unity Party, don't depend on Ellie Joseph Sally, on corrupt money. Alright, don't depend corrupt money, you raise your own money. You raise your own money, you gotta protect you. It's just a matter of you guys starting to do something. But the Unity Party put enough your party. They love their party, they just start building party around an individual, you're building around the people. You're building party around people, around the people themselves, the real people themselves. So that when you call them, they will come, they will show up. If I'm not building around leaders, tomorrow they get in positions that they start stealing money to get a party. You can make your contribution, your salary, like, take for example, if I work in the government. If I were part of any political party, or Unity Party, or Liberty Party, or ANC. If I wait going, my salary that I make is for me and my family. So you wanna make any contribution of that salary, I can make a percentage to the party. That's okay, that's not corruption, alright? But making the party, taking the political leader, like you do, you're making him, you're putting too much pressure on the person. That'll do everything, no. Gotta look for the money, and the people are there, they can do it. The Lebrun people, they can do it, they will, they will help. And you have to teach them that, if you don't teach them how to do it, you know, then you giving a wrong notion to the people. If you are going there to promise and put out, I will give money, don't lie, you give nobody money. When somebody put money into something, they value it. That's why you need to be doing that, like, be, your political party, let the people themselves, the people themselves give for their party. Then they will value their party, and no nonsense will come over there, and nobody will go and say nonsense in their party. Because they will resist you, because it belongs to them. That's how it's supposed to be, and I wanna challenge the old man, Joseph Bakai. Alright, it has much, oh man, during the town hall meeting, you know, I just wish that somebody in town hall meeting, you have started raising some money for the, for the very people, the, the party people. And you give it, challenge them, you see, if you have share over there, look, my people, we got a lot of work to do. Before we leave here, and no, thank you for all of your work, but before we leave here, you're, whatever you have come and put it in this basket for the party. If you are party or you are supporter, not simple time, they will come and put something there. Or you're waiting, you're waiting for next year to start raising money? Before you start doing work that is supposed to be doing now? You'll leave early, early is no good to, to, to the party. She's not gonna help you, eh, oh man, Bakai. The Obama is not gonna help you in anything. That Obama is not gonna help you in anything. Once you raise your hand and say, I will persecute. People who took money wrongly from the government, they will pay back, once you put your head up. Even the election, you gotta monitor the election to the, to the, to the. I mean, you're gonna have people looking there, and you're gonna ensure that the international community, when that time reaches, people are watching, other than that. When you got bunch of people that you're supposed to persecute, and you raise your head and say it, and you going against the election. Make sure that all the loopholes are closed. Other than that, they will manipulate. So stay strong, you said to the Librarian people that whoever stole, they will pay back to the government. Believe in the same people, go back to them, if you don't have it. Especially start with your party, they tell them, we will have to raise this money, I was so. If it had to be millions of that, they can raise it, raise the money, you have to start talking about them. In America, post a election, millions and millions, talk about. You think you, you all the thing wanna do, you do it by both. I tell most of the town hall you are talking about, the objective was to present is about, in as much as you, you, you be hard time. The party is my hard time. You take two years is, 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 is far. With all that you want to do, and to keep the people informed, updated. You have to start treating people that, that will be representing you, either police centers, or you waiting for, 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 for more to the election. And start recruiting people. Alright, we can say, oh, but again, oh man, thank you. But I hope the next, the next town hall meeting, whether in Liberia or here, Mister Bakai. This is not machine business, stop looking up to that, she not gonna help you. Your people, the parties themselves, your supporters, start raising the money in town hall meeting. Provide information how the people can give, and ensure that every dime that is paid is going towards the party, improve a rich average. Start doing that, why you must start doing, that's what start doing. So again, thank you so much, and, uh, uh, I wanna say thank you for watching, I gotta go, man, friends, I gotta go. Uh, I wanna say thank you for watching, I gotta go, man, friends, I gotta go. Watch out for the next clip, we got a lot of goodies coming on, a lot of good thing coming on. Uh, especially my, my program, the, uh, the, the new beginning. It, it has to do with the public sector, it has to do with how government resources are managed. So, catch me the next time the video, it, it got a couple of video. That was started the presentation, many video, go to, uh, you can go on my timeline, you know, Facebook. You can go on to the Liberia, you know, that what we do almost everything. Go on to the Liberia, check there, and Liberian people, you, you gotta listen, you gotta be, be willing to learn. And be willing to listen, read, read. If you, if you can read, people got program, listen to the program, it provide information. Provide you information, so thank you, folks, thank you for all that you, you do. Thank you to all our team back there, the team in Minnesota, that, uh, uh, gave the courage today. Uh, not along with, uh, Patrick and other guys. We say thank you, thank you, Elijah, you and the folks over there, and, uh, see you tomorrow be live. But tomorrow, we are taking a different train, it's not politics, it's not, you know, uh, uh. Talking about a political party, we have our program, uh, join us tomorrow. Uh, and let us enjoy our shop, it all about, uh, we'll be talking about. You, your, your, your faith, you know, so it's not about politics tomorrow, okay? Not about politics, but again, thank you, man, thank you, thank you so much, I love you all, take care, be nice.